We call this meeting to order of the city council meeting being June twenty second, the year of our Lord, 2021, being seven P M. Is that right? Six.
I thought it was missed.
Okay. Let's put that on the budget. Uh, thank you for arising. Uh, invocation will be given by Pastor Brian McWilliams.
Would you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, we gather right now and we thank you for this, uh, this group that you have assembled, Lord God, to, uh, give wisdom and guidance and rule justly over our city. And Father, we pray for them. We pray to your God that you will do exactly that. And Lord, you would, uh, just give them the wisdom that they need to make right decisions. Help them, Father, every step of the way in the work that they do. Their work is not easy. We understand that and know that. But Father, we ask that you would, uh, grant your favor. Favor upon them as they make decisions. Father, in favor upon Odessa, Texas. We thank you for our city. We thank you for where we are privileged to live and we praise you, dear God, for that. We pray now, Father, that you will guide this meeting every step of the way and that, Father, you would, uh, grant those who are going to be speaking, uh, your guidance and your wisdom there. And we thank you, Father, for how you do so. We love you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for our pledges that will be given by Councilman Sprouls.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission, Governor Ron, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Follow the Texas flag.
Our honor, the Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to the Texas, what makes it governor, one indivisible.
Everybody can be seated. Item three, any proclamations, awards or presentations, Ms. Grimalda?
No, sir.
Okay, next item to be, I don't know if more consent agenda, uh, can council overlook that? Uh, while we're overlooking it, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before or during the consideration of said item. I'll entertain a motion for, uh, the approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Swann, a second by Councilman Sprouls. All in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Uh, nay. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to, uh, other council action. Uh, item one, consider acceptance of 2020 comprehensive annual financial report. Ms. Munson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, we reviewed this last week in our work session and we're doing a high level review tonight for your acceptance. I would like to bring, uh, Greg Peterson up. He's partner with, uh, Weaver. He's actually the audit partner over this job. Um, he was tied up last week, so David Durey filled in for him. And, uh, we're gonna go over a few of the highlights and, uh, answer any questions that you might have. Greg?
All right. Well, Cindy mentioned, my name is Greg Peterson. It's my pleasure to come and present to y'all tonight. I think y'all all have a packet in front of y'all with, uh, some slides that we'll be reviewing. So we'll flip over, uh, to the third slide where we're, uh, audit results of the financial statements. So the whole point of an audit is for the auditor to render an opinion on the financial statements. Um, and we are set to render an unmodified opinion on those financial statements. So an unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance that you can receive in an audit. So unmodified is also known as a clean audit opinion. As, as part of, uh, our audit process, you know, we don't just look at just the numbers. We also evaluate internal controls, um, as part of our testing. And we will issue a report, uh, over internal controls. And dur- in that report, we did not identify any material weaknesses in internal controls. We did identify a significant deficiency in internal controls. Um, and we did not identify any non-compliance with any material contracts or laws. And, and just to kind of backtrack a second on the significant deficiency. So just to communicate that, so what that issue was, was there was some accounts payable that was, uh, put into the wrong period. So the, the expenditures related to these accounts payable weren't put into the correct period. And what that really related to was there's a lot of invoices that came in late due to COVID, due to other matters, uh, change in accounting system also led to, to some of these older invoices not being identified and put in the proper period. The adjustment was not material to these financial statements. It was just, it was one of these things, one of these errors that we identified that we just want to bring to attention of, of governance to say that, no, the control's not broken, uh, but we just want to point out that and have these discussions with management that, you know, they need to take a closer look at these, these older invoices when they come in to make sure that they get coded to the proper reporting period. Um, so that's gonna be included in this report, uh, as a significant deficiency. Uh, moving on to the next slide or page, this is the results of our single audit. So in addition to auditing the financial statements, the numbers of the city, we also perform an audit of, uh, do it, perform a single audit. And this is an audit of your federal and state programs. So again, we're gonna issue an unmodified, uh, report on your, on your single audit. The two programs that we tested were the federal transit cluster and the CARES funding. Uh, again, we, we don't only just look at compliance when we're doing these single audits. We also look at internal controls over compliance. Um, happy to report that there's no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no matters of non-compliance identified in this single audit. In addition to the single audit, we have to, uh, report any findings, um, that are required under uniform guidance related to our financial statement audit. Um, there's nothing to report there and we did not identify any question cost related to any of these federal programs that we tested. So that would be, a question cost would be if we thought there were expenditures that were improperly spent, that would be a question cost. We did not identify any of those as part of this audit. As part of our auditing procedures, we're also required to make certain communications to governance. Uh, so those would include that where there were no material errors, irregularities, or legal acts that we identified. Uh, there were no transactions entered into the city or entered into by the city that there's not sufficient guidance on how those, uh, transactions should be recorded. We did not have any difficulties or disagreements with management throughout the audit process. Uh, we maintained our independence throughout the audit and, uh, the city did not seek consultation with, you know, outside accountants, um, or basically to get second opinions on any of our suggestions, uh, made through, throughout the audit. Next, we'll look at some financial highlights just real quick. So this would be slide number eight. So what we're looking at here is this breakdown of your net position, uh, within your governmental activities and your business type activities. So your total net position for your governmental activities is a hundred ninety-four million dollars, which, uh, you can see is about a thirty-four million dollar increase over prior year. Your business type activity net position is two hundred nineteen million dollars, which is about a, a twenty million dollar increase over the prior year. In the next slide, we'll, we'll see a little bit more detail about these changes in your net position. So slide nine, this is a breakdown of your, uh, your change in net position for your governmental and business type activities. Um, so total governmental revenues were a hundred and forty-four million dollars. Um, for the current year, you had total expenses of a hundred nine million, resulting in an increase in net position of thirty-five million dollars for your governmental activities. For your business type activities, you had total revenues of a hundred and one million, total expenses of seventy-three million, which resulted or netted to a twenty-seven point four million dollar increase in net position. The next slide is just, uh, a chart of your revenues by source. Um, and what you, what this chart really, I think, identifies and helps you see is any variability, variability in revenues over a five-year period. Uh, so you can see that your water and sewer revenues have, have remained pretty, pretty comparable year over year. Same with your solid waste. Uh, property taxes had an increase this year due to increase in values. And then your sales tax revenue, uh, was down this year, um, just due to less sales or transactions, uh, in the current year. The, the next slide is a highlight of your governmental fund revenue sources. Um, again, you can kind of see by comparing nineteen's revenues to twenty revenues by looking at this pie chart, you can see that there's a lot of consistency in your revenue sources year over year, um, with the most of your revenues coming from your property taxes and your city sales tax for your govern- for your governmental, uh, revenue types. The next slide is a comparison of your expenditures, uh, of your governmental funds. Again, kind of similar to what we looked at in your revenues, looking at comparability. This really, I think, highlights the comparability of your expenditure. So you can see that public safety is your largest expenditure, uh, within the city, um, followed by your public works. And then capital outlay, you know, there's variability in there depending on your capital projects, your scheduling of that and, uh, what, what you have planned out, what your, uh, capital asset plan is for future years. So, uh, there's oftentimes a lot of variability in, in capital outlay expenditure. But, uh, public works and public safety being the, the largest two, uh, are, are very consistent when you look at this, not only for a two-year period, but if you were to go back probably ten years, twenty years, you would see that those two would probably be your two biggest expenditure sources. Uh, the next slide is, uh, budgetary highlights. So what we're looking at here is the budgetary highlights of your general fund. So the first row here is your amended or your adjusted, uh, budget. So we have total revenues of your, uh, adjusted budget of ninety-nine million, total expenditures of a hundred and five million. Um, and then we compare that with your actual results on the next row. So, uh, we have actual revenues of a hundred and four million dollars, where we, we had a, a budget of ninety-nine million dollars, which netted us a positive budget variance of five million dollars. You had, uh, a budget expenditures of a hundred and six million dollars. You had actual expenditures of eighty-nine million dollars, which again resulted in a, a positive fluctuation for expenditures where you had less expenditures than what was budgeted. So we have a net positive result when we look at budget to actual of twenty-one point six million dollars within the general fund. And then this final slide is just, uh, a chart of your outstanding debt. Uh, you can see that for 2020, there's about a hundred and ninety million dollars outstanding, uh, of your bonded debt. So that's all your C O's, your G O's, your capital leases, um, that's all included in this number. Does not include your pension or your O P E B, but, um, but your total other debt is about a hundred and eighty million dollars. And again, you can see the variability there and you, when you see these changes in these increases, it's due to, uh, bond issuances. All right, well, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions y'all may have, uh, regarding the, the results of our audit.
Any questions or comments? Want to go through, go through one, one more time?
I have a comment. I'd just like to thank, uh, Weaver as well as Cindy for, um, the audit and Cindy for a continuous effort of making sure that we have, uh, unmodified, um, audit. I know it's a lot of work and tedious, uh, tedious work and so I appreciate it. But I also appreciate you pointing out our significant deficiencies because everybody's human. And I know that, um, I received a comment that, you know, maybe we were crooked. And so thank you for pointing out that that was just a mistake. It, no money is missing. Everything is above board and the city is in good hands. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the sleeping material.
Oh, you're welcome. Read the notes. They're great.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you very much.
We just need y'all's acceptance and we can go forward.
So do we have a, uh, motion, uh, to accept, uh, the, uh, the 2020 comprehensive annual financial report as presented?
So moved.
Man, it's always in unison. So, um, motion is, uh, motion is, uh, given by Councilman Willis, second by Councilman Thompson. All in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two, we're gonna have a public hearing. Open a public hearing to consider approval request by Permian Basin Women's Resource Center Newton Engineering Agent. Mr. Brennely.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, the city mailed out eight notices related to this request. We did not have any of these notices returned. We did receive one written approval and one written protest. And the concern on the protest was, uh, with, uh, property values and possible property taxes going up on, uh, on the, uh, on their rental property. But the property involved in this request is located northwest of the intersection of, uh, West Eighth and North Sam Houston. In fact, it's just right across the street over here. Uh, the site is currently zone multifamily one. It is vacant. Land uses in the area does consist of a single-family residential development to the north and office development is located east, south, and west of this site. Uh, the owner of the property and the applicant in the case is the Permian Basin Women's Resource Center. Newton Engineering is acting as the agent in this request. And the purpose of the zone change request would facilitate office use development on this site and that it would also coordinate the zoning of this property with the property that's located to the west of this site that's also owned by the applicant in this case. Uh, the request is not out of scale with the needs of this neighborhood or the city of Odessa. It's not in conflict with the land use plan that's, uh, in the city of Odessa's comprehensive plan. And the proposed development is intended to be a complement to the applicant's existing, uh, adjacent land use facility and activity. Uh, this request will be an infill development. It will have access to existing roads and utilities and it will be a, uh, a good, uh, repurposing of this property. Uh, the planning and zoning commission did give unanimous approval to this request and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Mr. Brennely? This is an open hearing. Anyone wishing to address this item on the agenda can do so by coming forward, stating your name and address for the record. Seeing that nobody's rushing to the podium, I'll close the open hearing. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Swann. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a ca- a second by Councilman Mata. All in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Brennely. We're gonna move on to item number three. Conduct a public hearing to consider, uh, reallocation of fifty thousand community development block grant for on the round number one. Submit, Maria. How are you, Ms. Sundwana?
Fine. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this item is requesting council reali- reallocate fifty thousand dollars in community development block ground, grant coronavirus round one funds and forty thousand dollars in C W G C V round three funds for a total of ninety thousand dollars that were returned by two outside agencies who had previously been allocated funding and they, uh, chose not to, uh, go forward with their projects. The coronavirus funds must be used to prevent, prepare for, or respond to the, uh, COVID nineteen pandemic. A request for projects was published as part of our annual C W G and home, a notice of funding availability. Only one request for the funding was received and that was for the city's, uh, mortgage rent and utility assistance program. Therefore, I'm requesting that the ninety thousand dollars be, uh, of coronavirus funds be allocated to the city's, uh, program. And I'll answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
Maria, could you just for the public explain what the M R U funds are?
It is, uh, assistance that we can provide to, uh, households, uh, that reside within the city limits who've been impacted by the coronavirus. Those who are behind in their rent, their mortgage, or the utilities or all, you know, or a combination. Uh, we've been able to help, um, a number of clients, probably we're about twenty-five right now. It is a process that is extremely tedious. It's labor intensive. It, uh, requires a lot of work on the, the household because there's documentation that we have to have to show that they were actually affected by the virus. Plus, we have to also qualify them as being low to moderate income, living within the ci- uh, city limits and living at the house that they're requesting assistance for. So there is a lot of documentation and paperwork that goes with it. But for those that are committed, it's a, it's a great benefit to them.
And should they be interested, they just come to your office?
Yeah, they can call our office, uh, the community development office at three three five four eight two zero. Uh, we have a waiting list we still have right now of about thirty, uh, three hundred and fifty people on it. Uh, we've gone through, we had six hundred and thirty-eight that we sent applications to or we've tried to prequalify them that did not qualify or did not return their applications. Uh, so far, we've been able to spend about sixty-five thousand dollars. So we're, we're moving through it. It's slow, but it takes time to gather all the, the documentation, all the, the information.
Thank you.
How much do you have left fund right now?
Oh, I didn't.
Before this?
Before this? Uh, about five hundred thousand remaining, I think, is what we've got. We're pretty close to five hundred thousand remaining.
And how much of that goes to the, to the resident? And how much of it is administrated?
Uh, we, our administrative costs are very low. We have one part-time person and one full-time person. Um, I just did a draw and I don't have the information here with me. But administratively, I think we were, we had about ten thousand dollars maybe for two months, for two months worth of expenditures. I think that's where we were at. Um, the rest of it, most of it, it, as you, um, I don't know if you understand, but on the rent and the mortgage, we do not give any of the money directly to the citizen. We pay directly to the mortgage company, to the landlord, or to the utility company. None of that. It's not a, uh, uh, you know, they come in and they think they're, we're gonna hand them a check to, to pay their rent and we're not.
And if they need assistance with completing that tedious paperwork that you just described, does that person help?
Yes, we have, we have people there that, uh, that can help, uh, along with the rental assistant. We also have our housing assistant who does our rehab, reconstruction, minor repairs. She's very familiar with all the paperwork that's necessary. She can help. I can help. Yeah, uh, we can, we've had plenty of people there to help them.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions or comments for, uh, Ms. Sundwana? This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come and speak and address this item on the agenda can do so by coming up to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. Seeing that nobody's coming forward, I will close the public hearing and I will, uh, propose a motion. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mata for approval of item number three. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Thompson. All in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes. Uh, move on to item four. Conduct a public hearing to consider allocation of eight hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars for program year twenty twenty-one community development block grants. Ms. Sundwana?
Uh, tonight, you have before you the request for the twenty twenty-one community development block grant and the home investment partnership funds. The city will receive eight hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars in C W G funds and we have a hundred and seven thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars in unprogrammed C W G funds that are available to allocate to eligible projects tonight. That makes a total of C W G funds available for, of nine hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. The city's home allocation for twenty twenty-one is two hundred and seventy-five thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars. The requests for funding are, uh, summarized in your council book. I do want to make note of one proposal that was submitted that is not in your funding book. There was additional information needed in order to qualify the project and presented to you. Uh, we, uh, gave the agency a deadline. They did not comply with the deadline, so, uh, it's not eligible and not included in your, in your book. Please note there, the following caps are in effect for the, for the funding. On the C W G funds, the C D administration cap is one hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. The public services activities, uh, cap is one hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And the home administration cap is twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fif- five hundred and twelve dollars. In order to continue to pro- provide the services to our citizens through the community development department, I'm making the following request for funding. For our program administration, I'm asking for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. These funds provide for the salary and benefits and along with operating costs of the department. For housing rehab, I'm asking for four hundred and fifty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars. A hundred and thirty-eight thousand three ninety-five of the funds is for, to provide salary and benefits for the housing staff and to cover project delivery costs such as title searches, land surveys, advertising costs, and other costs associated with building houses. Two hundred and, or three hundred and twenty thousand of the dollar of the funding would be used for construction costs for emergency repairs, minor repairs, or reconstruction of owner occupied how- homes in Odessa. For the demolition program, I'm asking for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. All of the funds allocated to the demolition program will go directly to cover the costs of the removal of unsafe and dangerous buildings within the city, city limits. We will cover, that cover the operating costs for the program out of our admin costs. For the home program funds, I'm requesting the following. For home program administration, twenty-seven thousand five hundred and twelve dollars for salary benefits and operating costs of that program. For the home, uh, homeowner rehab program, two hundred and six thousand dollars, three hundred and forty, two hundred and six, three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. These funds will be used to provide for reconstruction of owner occupied homes. We also have to allocate forty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars to a community housing development organization, otherwise known as a CHODO. We are required to set this, uh, fifteen We are required to set this fifteen percent aside, even though we do not currently have an eligible CHODO within the community. And those are the quests for the, from the community development department. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions or comments for Ms. Sundabak?
What is an eligible CHODO?
It is, uh, it's known as a community health, uh, housing development uh, corporation or entity. A nonprofit uh, agency that does housing and builds affordable housing can apply for those funds and apply to be a CHODO. We did have one at, uh, several years ago. But when HUD changed the requirements to the home program in that they had to have separate staff, they could not share staff. They couldn't use a consultant to help them manage the, the program, that uh, the local CHODO decided uh, not to participate any longer.
So when we don't have a CHODO, what happens with?
The, after uh, two years, I think it's two years, the funding goes back, goes back to HUD. And they were reallocated to other cities that have CHODOs.
Any more questions or comments? We do have uh, someone that wants to speak on this item. Uh, Ms. Margaret Burton. Ms. Burton, just state your name and address.
I sure will.
Thank you.
Margaret Burton Mills on the Wellsworth, Odessa, thirteen fourteen East Fifth Street. Uh, mainly, I want to thank y'all for the help that y'all had this past year. My clients, thank you very much. But right now, we're serving ninety-eight hundred people on our program. And ninety-eight of those are funded the city of Odessa C W G funding. It is very, very hard to tell someone, no, they can't have a meal. I have ninety some odd people that's in their eighties and nineties. I have one, a hundred and two. And how do you tell someone that age with no income, they're not gonna get a meal? We do have a waiting list. That's one reason we're asking for C W G funding. Y'all have been very, very good through this pandemic. I couldn't have done without the COVID funds that the city and y'all gave me because it was a lifeline. We had to do completely change in our delivery system because we had to protect our clients and our volunteers. Because they are very, very important to us. You know, with the staff of nine, we couldn't have done it without y'all. And I do thank you very, very much for your time and that you give to the city and to all of us out here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret.
Any questions or anything? I do thank y'all.
Thank you, Margaret. Anyone wishing to come and address this item, number four can do so by coming forward and uh, speaking by stating your name and address for the record. Good afternoon.
Hello, how are you doing? I wanna uh, thank the mayor and the.
Give us your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Jeanette Thorne, and I'm with Special Olympics Texas. And we are throughout the state of Texas, but we are asking for the city of Odessa, for funding for the city of Odessa. And we're asking for uh, the assistance for a hundred and eleven individuals that participate with Special Olympics in the Odessa area. And uh, the, our services provides life skills training through athletic activities through the community. And without the life skills, some of our individuals would not be able to function in the uh, community. Um, we also provide uh, training through our athletic leadership program and global messenger programs. So that way, they are able to function in the community. Uh, they serve on board of directors. Uh, they lead other athletes and they lead com- uh, community um, um, projects within the, the community. And uh, these programs teach our individuals the skills necessary to find jobs, communicate in the community, and help to them to adapt to social uh, situations that may arise in their day to lives. Uh, we continue to teach coping skills that may arise with emotional situations. And how to be leaders on and off the court, which promotes uh, sportsmanship. So we do appreciate any consideration for, for our funding.
Any questions, any comments? Thank you very much.
I'm a little nervous, thank you.
No, you did great. So, uh, counsel, uh, how do you want to handle it? Do you want to go? Oh, I'm sorry. Can we ride ahead? I beg your pardon. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good evening, Kara Evenson Dorothy, five thirteen East Ninety-fourth Street here in Odessa, Texas. And I am director for Family Promise of Odessa. We help children with families that are homeless by providing shelter, meals, transportation, and referrals to local social, social services here within our community. We are requesting twenty thousand dollars for our project titled Transition to Independence. And um, homeless families here in Odessa need our assistance. Uh, there were approximately three thousand students identified uh, through E C I S D this last academic year. The Homeless Coalition reports twenty-five percent of the homeless are single parent families with children. These families are living in their cars, hotels, travel trailers, uh, with other families in a dwelling. And they need their own home and we are here to help. And we do this with a holistic approach to our families, providing that they become financially independent and living in their own home. We meet with them weekly. Uh, there is no cost to the families and they can stay uh, for up to a year in our program. They set goals coming on uh, into the program, so we make sure that they stay on track. We provide uh, childcare assistance, car repairs, uh, pay for counseling. Whatever the uh, need is, clothing, school supplies, we make sure the families um, find that solution that we're able to help. And with this last year, that was quite challenging. We were able to help four families, including seventeen individuals. And we certainly appreciate uh, your support in the past and thank you for your consideration this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Counsel, any questions or comments? Thank you, Ms..
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Leanne Anru, and I'm representing Greater Opportunities of the Permian Basin. Hollingsworth Head Start for this specific request that we have placed. Um, Hollingsworth Head Start has been a space that we've been using since nineteen ninety-three. It's located at nine hundred South Grant. And um, it's graciously been donated to us from the city of Odessa, where we are able to serve Head Start and early Head Start children. Um, at that location, we have three Head Start classrooms, two early Head Start classrooms. So we serve a total of about seventy children. Um, the current playground surface at our Hollingsworth Head Start playground is filled with those loose particle wood chips. And um, those escape in shoes, pockets, you name it. Those kids will hide them in places they shouldn't. Uh, not only that, but they get washed away with every storm that we have. They must be constantly replaced every year. Um, and they've been there for a very long time. And so what we are proposing to do um, with the funding that we have requested is remove all of the wood chips. Replace the padding underneath and replace the top surfacing with a turf style surfacing instead of the wood chips. This will not only allow us to maintain that playground for years to come. There's a ten to fifteen year guaranteed warranty on that material. But it also will enable us to allow access to the playground, different parts of the playground for children with disabilities, which right now with wood chips, that is impossible to do. And so, C W G has been really good to us. The city has been really good to us in the past. We have been able to update multiple of um, facilities with our playgrounds and, and this is just one more um, one more project that we propose that we would like to do with that money. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments?
I do. If you, if we're unable to uh, fund the, the amount that you've asked for, what are your plans if we're, if we're not able to get to that amount? Do you have other funding sources?
Well, the plan, uh, right now, we have funding allocated towards a complete replacement of our roof there that is running us about a hundred and twenty thousand. And in addition, we are replacing H VAC units there that is running us about an additional thirty-five thousand. So we would have to go back to our board, of course, and discuss what we can move around in our budget to allocate funding to that project. Um, it's certainly not off the table, but it's just something that is uh, less as important as the roof and the H VAC systems there. So that's what we prioritize.
How old is the roof?
The roof is, is.
Twenty-five years?
I, I would suspect so.
Remember being on the council when we did that.
Yeah.
What a flashback.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really old and, and it needs a lot of help.
How many units on there, H VAC?
Uh, there are four units. We replaced one about three years ago with C W G funding. Um, that was a big one that ran the main areas and the gymnasium in that location. And, and the ones that we are replacing this year are running three classrooms in our kitchen area. Yeah.
Counsel, any questions?
So seventy-five thousand is just for the playground?
That is just for the playground. That is the entire amount to actually remove and uh, refill, re-pad, and place that turf style.
How many kiddos are you serving at Hollingsworth?
We are, when fully enrolled, sixty-seven children. And that is fifty-one of those are Head Start age, which are three and four-year-olds. The sixteen other children there are toddlers. We don't serve any infants at that location, but it is early Head Start, and so it's infant and toddler served. Yes.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that all the presenters? That's all? Okay. So, um, how we're gonna handle this is we're gonna go from uh, each district and you'll present your numbers. And then we'll get to consensus. So, uh, first person up is District One, Councilman Mata.
Um, looking at all this stuff, and I think all of these uh, organizations that are asking for this money are, is very well spent. So I'm, I'm gonna go with everything for, to go ahead and go approve the nine hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-six. That's, that's including, that's for the, for the C W G.
That's the total.
So a total amount requested is one million five nine five eighty. So you have to let me know what.
You're gonna have to itemize it per, per, per uh, per uh, recipient, everybody that's over here that's, that's.
So we had to go through line item, line item? Okay, I'm sorry. Um, for the, I can't scroll the Zapcan on, on here.
No.
For the Meals on Wheels, can we go to the Meals on Wheels, please? I want to do all of the seventy-nine thousand.
Seventy-nine?
Yes. And also for the Special Olympics to the sixteen six fifty. The Family Promise, twenty thousand dollars. For the Hollingsworth Head Start, the seventy-five five three five.
What was that last one?
Seventy-five five three five for the Hollingsworth, Hollingsworth Head Start. And the Program Administration, the one eighty. Housing Rehab at four fifty. Demolition, um, two twenty.
What was that last one?
The demolition at two twenty, yes, sir. The Homeowner Rehab Program, um, the two oh six three four three. Home Program Administration, twenty-seven five twelve. And this uh, Community Housing Development at forty-one two six nine. And that's, that's all of them, correct?
That's all of them.
Yes, sir.
Does he have outstanding?
I'm sorry?
Does he have anything outstanding?
Uh, it's twenty-four three forty-one.
Okay.
Well, hold on.
It's over.
It's over ninety-one oh three oh nine. However, if we go through everybody.
We gotta go, let's go through everybody and see and, yeah, I can play with some of that.
Mr. Thompson, you're up next, sir.
All right, we'll start at the top. Uh, Community Development Request, the eight fifty. Public Facility Improvements.
I'm sorry, so?
I'm sorry.
Do you want the thing split, uh, Mr. Thompson?
I just went back up to the top. I'm sorry. You don't, okay, never mind. Program Administration, the one eighty's okay. Uh, Housing Rehabilitation, uh, four twenty-five. And Demolition, uh, two twenty is good.
Can I go in? I'll, I'll agree with, uh, Councilman Thompson, do the uh, four twenty-five on the Housing Rehabilitation.
There you go. Uh, seventy-five, five thirty-five on the Head Start. Family Promise, twenty. Meals on Wheels, seventy-nine. Special Olympics, sixteen six fifty.
Well, we're not going to, District Three going to District Four. Councilman Spals?
Oh, Paul, I'm sorry.
No, you're right.
Still got the.
Oh, you still got the, you still got down the line.
Last three there.
The last three, I started up there, but, yeah, the Homeowner Rehab, two oh six three forty-three. Administration, twenty-seven thousand five twelve. And then uh, Community Housing Development, forty-one thousand two sixty-nine. Program Admin, one fifty. Housing, four and a quarter. Demolition, two twenty. Seventy thousand for Hollingsworth Head Start. Family Promise, twenty thousand. Meals on Wheels, seventy-five thousand. Special Olympics, uh, fifteen thousand. Uh, Rehab Program, two oh five. Home Program Administration, twenty-five. And the required forty, three sixty.
Councilman Willis? Councilwoman Willis? Go ahead.
Do you have me back at the top?
Yeah. It's gonna get small, so. Program Administration is first.
Okay, Program Administration, one eighty. Housing Rehab, four two eight two two six. Demolition, two ten. Hollingsworth, seventy thousand. Family Promise, ten thousand. Meals on Wheels, seventy-five thousand. And Special Olympics, sixteen six five zero. Homeowner Rehab, Rehab Program, two oh six three four three. Home Administration, twenty-six thousand. And the required amount, forty thousand three sixty. forty thousand three sixty.
Council, Councilwoman Swann?
Uh, Program Administration, one hundred and eighty thousand. Housing Rehabilitation, four twenty-five. Demolition Activities, two twenty. And then, are you at that Hollingsworth next?
Yes, Hollingsworth.
So Hollingsworth Head Start, seventy-five five thirty-five. Family Promise, twenty thousand. Meals on Wheels, seventy-nine thousand. Special Olympics, uh, sixteen six fifty. The Home Program Administration, twenty-seven five twelve. Oh, I'm sorry, Home Rehab Program. Yeah, I'm sorry, it's the two oh six, three forty-three. And then the Housing Development Organization, forty-one two sixty-nine.
Okay, for myself, just, uh, I'm going with Councilman Spauls. That is the lowest number that they're at, twenty-five difference.
Same as, everything same as Councilman Spauls?
Yep. We're at sixty-six on one, two, twenty-five on, uh, four, thirty-seven on, uh, five, and twenty-three at the at large. So we need to make those adjustments, get within, uh, with the amount allowable. So, you will find where we, uh, where we concede and then make the adjustments.
So Hollingsworth, Hollingsworth Head Start still does not.
Oh, yeah, on the Hollingsworth Head Start, I'll go down to seventy.
That's fine with me as well.
It's fine with me as well.
He said it was Spauls. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, Meals on Wheels? We don't have a consensus.
I'll go up to seventy-nine.
So now we're over sixty thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. So that's gonna need to come down.
How much?
Sixty thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. So I can go through the numbers again. Program Administration was at one eighty. Housing Rehabilitation was at four twenty-five. Demolition's at two twenty. Hollingsworth Head Start is seventy. Family Promise is at twenty. Meals on Wheels is at seventy-nine thousand. And Special Olympics is at fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Um, I'll go down to one fifty on the Program Administration.
Thirty thousand right there.
I'll go down to one fifty also.
I'll do the same, that's fine.
Marita, quick question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's a thirty thousand dollar difference. Is that a, is that a position?
Yes, it's one and a half.
That would be, that would affect what, what program?
Uh.
The housing re, uh, the assistance?
Well, demolition program, I pay for, uh, that salary out of there, and then I pay half of the program assistance.
Okay, so we'd be losing one person, well, half a person probably.
Half a person, yeah.
A half a person?
Well, ours. It's government, that government calculator.
We are still over thirty dollars seven hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Well, I'm sorry, what's that amount?
Thirty dollars seven hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Um, put me down for two hundred on the demo. Oh.
He's moved, he, two hundred thousand on the demolition for Monta? I would agree to that.
I'll agree to that, too.
I would also.
Ten thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Thirty thousand, is that what you're saying?
Uh, ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
I would do it in the, uh, could, go, how's it, no, no, hold on, hold on. The Housing Rehab, yeah. Go down ten thousand of mine there.
Four fifteen?
Yeah. What, what's that difference? Ten, ten seven seventy-four, take it out of there. Grab that call, it's important.
I'll do the same, that's good.
Same here, four fourteen, twenty, two twenty-six.
Four fourteen, two twenty-six.
Let me make sure this, uh, so. Yep, nine forty-nine eight seven six. Home. We have a consensus on the first one, no consensus on Home Program Administration or Community Housing Development Organizations.
Community Housing Development Organization, the forty thousand three sixty is the requirement, right, Maria?
I'll go down to that, uh, four, forty thousand three, yeah.
Yeah, and we currently ha, don't have them.
Yeah, just do the required, that's fine.
Okay, Home Program Administration.
I'll go down to twenty-five thousand on that.
I can go down twenty-five as well.
That's fine, yeah, twenty-five also, that's good.
Do they need to get the thirty-four twenty-one?
What?
Do they need to use the full amount?
Yeah, they used, yeah, the time, yeah. They, you have to allocate the total amount.
What do we have outstanding?
Thir- thirty-four twenty-one.
Thirty-four twenty-one?
Marita was saying, basically, we have to allocate the full amount.
Oh, we have real home and funds allocate, uh, three thousand four hundred twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay, so you have, we have to allocate that.
Let's put it back in the.
Can we put it back from where we cut?
What I asked for was exactly the amount that, that we have available.
Right. That's what I was thinking.
Well, yeah, then let's do that. I'll do the two. I'll do the two oh six three four three, twenty-seven five one two, and the forty-one two six nine.
Let me put what Marita had requested as well. I'll put what Marita had requested as well. I actually thought that's what I had done to begin.
Twenty-seven, yeah, the twenty-seven five twelve.
Let her put it right after.
Okay.
We got it?
We got it.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Swann. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Thompson. All in favor, indicative by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, indicative by saying aye. Motion passes, money is allocated. We thank you for, everybody for, uh, coming out. Uh, truly sorry, this is a difficult process, and I, I know most times that everybody walks away with everything they have, but we try to do as much as we can. We even cut Marita's sound of vows. I apologize for that, and so, uh, we'll try. This is a hard process. Uh, I've done it many times. There used to be a lot more money, and it used to have a bigger overflow, so it has always been very difficult. Thank you everyone for applying and being here tonight. Okay, we're gonna move on to Resolution Item Number Five. Consider the First Amendment and Restated Interlock Agreement for Waste Water Treatment Services. Mr. Kerr?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, sir.
Gulf Coast Authority, GCA, operates an industrial waste treatment facility on South Grandview in an interlocal agreement with the city of Odessa since nineteen ninety-five. Gulf Coast Authority receives approximately two point five million gallons per day of city municipal waste. The city pays Gulf Coast Authority two hundred thousand dollars per year for treatment of the nine hundred and twelve point five million gallons they receive. The city and GCA are currently under an interlocal agreement executed in January of twenty sixteen. On November twelfth of twenty twenty, GCA gave notice of termination to the city of the current interlocal agreement to be effective December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. This was provided with the intent to renegotiate the terms based on the uncertainty of revenue sources and a lack of provisions for cost recovery negotiations under the contract. Uh, this, uh, GCA, however, did indicate in their notice their intent to continue to provide industrial wastewater treatment services. The authority's operation of this facility is beneficial to the city in that it helps maintain and support the industrial activities in the facility's surrounding area. Changes to the agree, agreement. Financial obligations of both parties are contingent upon the availability and appropriation of sufficient funding in the annual budget. In the event of a significant change in the funding within any budget year arising from loss of revenue or a decrease in the operating reserve to less than ninety days, the parties agree to meet and negotiate in good faith an amendment to the authority's annual budget. And, city's management fee is established and triggered only in the event that the authority's funds and revenues from other customers are insufficient to pay at least ninety-five percent of the cost of the operation and maintenance of the facility for any given budget year. The initial term would expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, with automatic two-year renewals until termination. However, the agreement shall not exceed fifty years. The city legal department reviewed and approved the amendments to the agreement in April of twenty twenty-one. GCA's board approved the amendment, amended agreement at their May twenty twenty-one board meeting. Uh, the resolution and first amended and restated, uh, the, the re, a resolution and the first amended and restated agreement are attached for your consideration of approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions or comments for Mr. Kerr? No, uh, comments or, uh, questions? Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Willis. I have a second, second by Councilman Spauls. All in favor, indicative by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, indicative by saying aye. Motion passes, thank you, Mr. Kerr. Now we're to item number six. I think that's what everyone's here for, I believe. To consider outside agency request for funding for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Ms. Munsey, this is what you've been looking for all year.
This is it. This is the fun night, so. You should've eaten supper before you came, right? Okay, I think, uh, so the, the top section, if y'all are looking at your schedule, is we're gonna go through the, uh, funding for the general fund, out of general fund. Uh, and so, I believe we're gonna go in order for anybody that wants to get up and speak to that. Um, so, I guess the first one would be the Children's Miracle Network, so.
Okay, so, I've got the magic list right here. So we're gonna be going down to the order for the, uh, Children's Miracle Network?
Yes.
So this is, uh, Haley Howie?
Yes.
There we go.
Thank you for having me. Um, I'm Haley, and I'm with Children's Miracle Network at Medical Center Health System. Um, I just wanna start off with a few statistics for Children's Miracle Network in Permian Basin Pediatric Care. Um, every hour, Children's Miracle Network at Medical Center Health System treats three children. Each week, nine hundred diapers are used. Each week, more than one hundred children with trauma are treated in the ER. Every year, more than twenty-three thousand children receive care by MCH. These very kids are our future and drivers of change who walk alongside us as we continue to advance pediatric healthcare throughout the Permian Basin. Thanks to the support of our donors such as the city of Odessa in the past, we are able to provide MCH with the critical funds needed to advance pediatric healthcare. These funds go to the most urgent needs, whether providing charitable care to families in need, training the next generation of doctors and nurses, advancing equipment for the best care possible, or offering families comfort and peace of mind through progressive patient and advancement services during the most trying moments. The majority of the funds requested tonight will be used to purchase an Omni Bed incubator for the NICU. This life-saving piece of equipment is one of the most expensive pieces that we use, but the most important for premature babies. The remainder of the funds will be designated for child life services and charitable support for patients and their families, and for those families who are in need for our patients. But what I am really asking for, from you tonight, is insurance for our future pediatric patients and their families. Out of the, out of the twenty-three thousand children that receive care by MCH each year, no parent imagines their child could be one of those twenty-three thousand pediatric patients. They may not need the help from semen today, but they could need it tomorrow. By investing in our future today, we can have a healthier tomorrow. True progression cannot be possible without the generosity of our donors, such as the city of Odessa. But as we celebrate the health of thousands of children helped over the past thirty-eight years, it is important to note that we are not finished. We have set our sights even higher. Because we know that when we approve medical treatment, equipment, and facilities, we can address the most challenging health issues today while preventing and preparing for those to come. When we make it easier for people to understand and give to improve children's health, our collective impact grows exponentially. And when we change the health of even one child or family, we create a ripple effect that prepares our community for years to come. Thank you for your previous support and for your consideration of our request tonight. Thank you for all you have done in driving our mission to change the future of pediatric healthcare in our community. With care and generosity, we know that together we can save kids' lives, and we are eternally grateful for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have any questions before?
Any questions? Any comments or questions?
Um, I had a question for, um, I was looking back at the history of which I were awarded.
Yes.
Um, do, has it always been fifty for the cost of the bed and for other services also, or was it just an increase?
It has, so the cost of the Omni Bed, the incubator, um, that's around thirty-six to thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, we currently have thirty, um, rooms in our NICU, and we only have about sixteen of those, so, um, we have a lot of babies come in. Um, we actually specialize in micro prem, preemie care, so we have a lot of transports coming in, and a lot of those micro premies do need those Omni Beds to survive. Um, we take as early as twenty-three weeks, so as you can imagine, that's pretty little, um, pretty undeveloped, so these beds do everything for the baby, so. Um, that's the cost of those beds. And then the rest is, um, we use for charitable care for families, so that's can be meal cards, gas cards. We have a lot of families, and we serve nineteen counties. So we have a lot of families coming in from Fort Stockton, Pecos, Big Spring, um, who might have jobs or other kids that we, they have to care for. So they're constantly driving back and forth, um, or we can provide hotel stays for those. Um, we can also provide, um, child life support for the kids, whether that's Play-Doh while they're receiving treatment, or, um, books, you know, to help keep them occupied between treatments and everything like that.
Now, not, not, just from a personal standpoint, we get, we were blessed to, um, use one of these beds. I mean, it, it helped our child when he was born. He was born, um, I mean, it helped our child when he was born. He was born nine weeks early and he got to use one of these beds back in the day and it was a lifesaver for him. So I really appreciate the work y'all do.
Well, I'm glad to hear that he was helped. That's great. Yes. I mean, like I said, these beds are a lifesaving. We don't know what we would do without them. So we're always constantly trying to update them, trying to replace them and trying to basically have every room have an Omni Bed so we can keep saving babies' lives.
Any more questions, comments?
I just had a question and I thank you for all Children's Miracle Network does. I noticed that we had granted twenty thousand last year, I believe.
Yes.
And it's not been used. Do you have a plan for that twenty thousand?
Yes, we actually have used it. We did purchase those micro whole refrigerators for that. And what that does is it's for our NICU rooms and those help store the breast milk for the moms. So the moms aren't having to, you know, store it in a communal refrigerator where they have cross contamination for the risk of that. So we have spent those funds for that. Yes.
Any more questions or comments? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Odessa Crime Stoppers, Ms. Rogers?
Mayor, City Council? I'm Susan Rogers with Odessa Crime Stoppers. Thank you for the opportunity to come for you again and for your past support and the partnership that we have with the City of Odessa. Odessa Crime Stoppers has been serving the City of Odessa since nineteen eighty-three. We've had thirty-eight years of success. During that time, we've received over thirty thousand tips which resulted in over ninety-six hundred cases cleared. We've also been a part of eleven and a half million dollars worth of stolen recovered property and seized narcotics during that time period. We do a lot of different projects throughout our year. One of the main projects that we do has, it revolves around graduation. This year we had project graduation. As you know, we had actually had two graduation ceremonies, two weekends worth of graduation ceremonies this year. That project is aimed at underage drinking and social hosting to enforce your social hosting policy that the City of Odessa has. This year was a very successful year. We considered it a success because we had no fatalities or accidents that involved minors in possession of alcohol. We did have numerous tips that came in and wrote many MIPs. One of the tips I discussed with the mayor actually brought in a felon that was wanted on two felony warrants, four point four grams of cocaine, and a gun, all at a party that contained juveniles. We're very proud of that program. It's been very successful. Besides paying out tips to students or adults that give us that information, it also works as a huge deterrent. We had a parent and a student actually get in touch with us after we had the press conference, the initial press conference, and told us that due to the PSA that the city helped produce for us for this and for all the coverage we had on social media, that at least two parties were canceled by parents who were in fear of your social media policy. That is a very good policy. It works. It saved probably many lives. We have hosted about five conferences here for our Student Crime Stopper Program, which is done through ECISD. We are looking forward to bidding for a twenty twenty-two or twenty-three adult conference through the governor's office to be held here as well. I appreciate all of your time and the things that you allow us to do within the city limits. And if you have any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer those.
Counsel, any questions or comments for Susan?
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Item number three, Permian Care, Cheryl McLaughlin.
Yeah, Cheryl's in our accounting department. She filled out the application. But I'm Chris Barnhill. I'm the CEO of Permian Care, which is formerly known as Permian Basin Community Centers for Mental Health and Mental Retardation. So MHMR may be more the name that you would know us by historically. We are your local mental health authority and your local authority for intellectual and developmental disabilities. We were created nineteen sixty-nine as a local government agency by the City of Midland and Midland County. And then in nineteen seventy-two, the City of Odessa and Ector County added themselves to what was Midland MHMR and became Permian Basin MHMR. Since then, we have added some other counties with Pecos, Brewster, Culverston, Jeff Davis, Hudson, and Presidio. So we've become an entity of about eight counties, about twenty-seven thousand square miles, which we brag about to all of our other community center friends, because that's a significant amount of land. In our local mental health capacity, we regulate the state inpatient facilities. So we make sure that people who come into the emergency room or call our crisis lines find their way into their state institutions for inpatient treatment, or we might have some funding. We don't have near enough these days for private psychiatric beds. But we do regulate that as the local mental health authority. We also have psychiatric clinics where psychiatrists will see individuals that are uninsured or undersured. And they will be supported by rehabilitation teams that provide, you know, supported housing, skills training, things of that sort. So that's our local mental health capacity. Then we also have the local intellectual and developmental disability capacity. In that area is where we usually fill out our application for the City of Odessa because it kind of dates back to a stint where this was under the Community Development Block Graham Funds. We have a ADD workshop. ADD is the term that we've used to replace mental retardation. So you may hear me refer to that periodically. But at that workshop, individuals with developmental disabilities will be trained in various vocational skills. They'll get socializing. The budget for that's about six hundred and twenty-one thousand. We cover about ninety thousand of that for the funds from the City of Odessa. Those funds are used also to match state dollars that help fund our Greater Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Division, which is about a million dollars in total. But that is the most logical workshop, you know, as we were running through the CDBG. Michael may remember that. That's where I met him. And that's kind of how we request this ninety thousand these days. So in addition to mental health and intellectual development disabilities, we have programs for substance addiction, for HIV primary care. So our role through the years has expanded greatly. I like to say we don't need the ninety thousand, but it matches about eight million dollars in state funding that is required to have about a twelve percent match. And so that's why we come to you every year with that ninety thousand dollar request on a very consistent basis. I see a lot of new faces this year and I'd like to meet, you know, with anyone, as much as you have questions about our services.
Go ahead and finish.
Well, we have a wide array of programs and sometimes I can get lost trying to explain each one. But if you ever have any questions about mental health in the community, especially those who are uninsured or underserved, then give me a call and, you know, Norma has my number. And we can have a sit down, have a conversation about it, make sure that we're helping in all the ways that we need to. And that includes, you know, intellectual development disabilities, addiction, things of that sort. So we are your community center.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
You bet.
We're gonna go to item number four, Odessa Teen Court. Need to update this list. I still got Tammy Hawkins on here.
Yes, I'm Tammy Hawkins. Good evening. I had this lovely thing typed out, but I had a surprise this evening. So I'm gonna speak, but I also want this lady to speak. I'm gonna introduce you to her in one second. I am Rebecca Grisham and I have been the coordinator with Teen Court for three years now. I am here to talk to y'all about what our program does, but I believe y'all pretty much have that figured out by now. And I always love that Odessa Crime Stoppers goes before us because all of those MIPs are what we are dealing with right now. So as they get busy, we get busy. And we serve teens that come to us from the city, ECISD, and the county. We have an interlocal agreement between all three entities and I am very proud to say that is a very cohesive, good working relationship and we are very proud of that. Our program has been in operation for thirty-eight years. So for thirty-eight years, we've been doing this. We've only had three directors in thirty-eight years. That's what I had typed. What I didn't have typed is we have had one volunteer with Teen Court that has been there like thirty-eight and a half years. That is Ms. Stacy Walton and she is one of my favorite people on this planet. And I'm so happy she was here tonight because that is such dedication. I just can't even believe it. So I want to touch on one or two little things and then I would love for Ms. Walton to speak. Odessa Teen Court over this last year was very helpful with Odessa Fire and Rescue to help the municipal court and the City of Odessa get the TMCEC Traffic Safety Award. We provide defensive driving class for our teenagers, access to a reality education driver program for teenagers. So basically, we got about two hundred teenagers in some kind of defensive driving or proactive driving safety. And I know y'all all would like for the drivers to be safe. The other thing we are very proud of this year is that we really did a ton of work with Keep Odessa Beautiful. We adopted two lots officially and then we just kind of kept going. So once a month, our kids get together and clean. We adopt lots. Our kids get community service hours. And over the last almost year, since we started last August doing this very structured, we've had three hundred and ninety-two teenagers collect five hundred and thirty-six bags of trash off of our lots. So that makes me very happy and they are now paying a little more attention to that. And now I am gonna step aside.
Good evening. Like she said, I am Stacy Walton and I have been with Teen Court since I was in the seventh grade and I'm still there today. I am fifty years old, so if you want to do the math. I started out with Natalie Ronstein, went to Tammy Hawkins, and then now I'm with Rebecca Grisham here. So I was not a defendant. So in case you're wondering, I was not a defendant just by coincidence. Didn't realize that she would be here tonight because I was actually going to be with the BCCO tonight for their presentation. But Odessa Teen Court is originally an awesome program. It helps our kids realize that just because you've made that one mistake doesn't mean that your life is over with. Their record is sponged after, of course, they've done the community service hours, they've done the jury duties also. Because of the program, I actually started one at my former middle school, which was Bookwell. It was junior high back then, Bowie Junior High. We actually had a Bowie Teen Court. And now I have been, well, I'm off to a new adventure. I'm at New Tech now. So maybe hopefully I'll be able to transfer that over to New Tech as well. I've seen a lot of my students who have come through. I've seen them. I've seen not only them, I've seen their parents as well who have come through as well. And they really truly are appreciative that they have this program in which their child can realize, yes, you've made a mistake, but you can, you can actually regain and actually understand the court system. Because a lot of our students don't understand the court system. They believe what happens on, happens on TV. Law and Order, NCIS, whatever you want to do. They believe in that. And for the first time, they actually get to sit in an adult courtroom as jurors. And they are, you know, they are their peers. Do judge them based on what they do, what they say, and so forth. And I would like to also add this because you probably don't, I don't know if you know this or not. Yes, okay. As far as scholarships, I was the first recipient of the Kenji Spencer Scholarship when I graduated in nineteen eighty-eight from Permian. And had it not been for that five hundred dollar scholarship, I never would have went to college. Because actually I stayed at OC, went to OC because I was working for Walmart. And back then, twelve hours was full hours, which was only two hundred and fifty dollars. So they paid for actually two semesters of my education. A lot of my students that have gone through Teen Court have come back as volunteers. I do have some now that are actually lawyers or who are actually going through law school. So it is a wonderful program.
Well, thank you very much for your service and dedication to this community. I think someone on this panel said earlier, and I'm gonna quote her, "The reason why you don't pay volunteers is because they're priceless."
This one is the epitome of...
Actually, I made that quote earlier.
Do y'all have any questions?
Any questions or comments?
All right. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you so much.
Next one is UTBB, first five, Permian Basin?
Yeah.
Nope?
Young professionals.
They're on my list.
Okay.
Young professionals of Odessa?
There we go.
All right.
That's me. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Ryan Patton. I'm the chairman this year for the Young Professionals of Odessa. As you may know, YPO is a development program of the Odessa Chamber of Commerce, designed to create business opportunities, support community involvement, provide leadership education, and to promote an overall investment in the future of Odessa adults ages twenty-one to forty. We're asking for twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in order to help continue to facilitate the work that the city's initial investment has spurred. Like everyone else, twenty twenty dealt YPO a very interesting hand, but I'm proud to say that our organization has stood strong. Even with the inability to support Odessa as we are used to, we were still able to manage almost seven hundred volunteer hours over the past year. We do this through many facets, including work with Keep Odessa Beautiful, code enforcement, the ECISD resupply drive, Odessa's Quality of Life Survey that we started last year and plan to kick off here in the next few weeks for our second year, our leadership programming that we do throughout the year, as well as our Odessa Under Forty Event. Just this past Saturday, we actually held our OU Forty Gala and honored twenty Odessans who are not only excelling within their professional career, but also giving back to the town that we love. YPO exists for many reasons. But one that I am particularly proud of is that this organization gives young professionals an outlet to get involved and to give back. So many young professionals get their education and we never see them again. This is a huge problem. We are losing so much talent when we see the children of Odessa leave, but YPO helps give those individuals a reason to stay, a reason to appreciate their lives here in Odessa when they get involved. I'd like to ask any YPO members or OU Forty recipients who may be here tonight to please stand to be recognized. These individuals that you see before you, this is the future of Odessa. These are the people that want to sit in your seats one day. And y'all's support to this organization, to these individuals, it continues to give them drive to know that there is a future in Odessa and they want to be a part of it. Your continued support is very much appreciated. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
I do have a comment. When I first started on council, and I think this is my third round of these fundings, I did have a lot of questions about YPO, if you guys will remember. And as far as diversity and including, you know, all people.
Absolutely.
I can, I can truly tell you that after having gone to events and become, you know, more active visually, looking at you guys and talking with the members and, you know, just seeing how you interact, I can definitely see a shifting. And so I want to congratulate you for that and ask you to continue, you know, to remember, you know, to always
Absolutely.
diversify as much as possible. But I just want to come back and say I've seen the change. So thank you.
Absolutely. We actually, you know, I've been very actively engaging the Hispanic Chamber and the Black Chamber this year as part of my chairman role. We just held an event in conjunction with the Hispanic Chamber back in May. They were able to get some new memberships off of that. They had some sponsorships that came out of that. And we're actively talking with Chris over at the Black Chamber to create an event. In fact, just my engagement with them has spurred membership on our side from that organization. So we're very excited to be partnering with them and to really drive home that diversity because it is important for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay. So how do we want to do this? Do we want to?
We want to go ahead and do the general allocation before we go on to kind of keep them segregated a little bit.
I was gonna go in reverse order because they already had it like you, so Mark will redhead.
All right. So let's see. For the Children's Miracle Network, I do want to give the complete amount, the total amount, fifty thousand. Odessa Crime Stoppers, the sixty. Permian Care, the ninety. Teen Court, sixty-six, nine fifty. And YPO at twenty.
Councilman Thompson?
I have the same numbers that Mark has. Children's Miracle Network at fifty, Crime Stoppers at sixty, Permian Care at ninety, Teen Court at sixty-six, nine fifty, and the twenty thousand for Young Professionals.
Councilman Spalls?
For Children's Miracle Network, I have twenty thousand. And Crime Stoppers, sixty. Permian Care, ninety. Teen Court, sixty-six, nine fifty. And twenty thousand.
Councilwoman Willis?
For Children's Miracle Network, I have thirty. For Crime Stoppers, I...
For Crime Stoppers, I have a problem seeing, but sixty thousand. Perma Care, eighty thousand. Odessa Teen Court, sixty-six, nine fifty. And Young Professionals, twenty-four, seven fifty.
Councilwoman Swann?
Children's Miracle Network, forty thousand. Odessa Crime Stoppers, sixty thousand. Perma Care, ninety thousand. I have to abstain from Teen Court because I work there. Young Professionals of Odessa, twenty-four, seven fifty.
Is Ms. Munson here? Is there a certain amount here that we have to reach or no?
No, sir.
So, it's just out of general fund?
Yes.
Okay, for Children's Miracle Network, go with the forty thousand. Sixty for Crime Stoppers. Ninety for the Perma Care. Teen Court, sixty-six, nine fifty. And twenty for the Young Professionals.
Children's Miracle Network does not have a contingency.
I'll go with the forty.
That would be able to cover the cost of the.
Yeah, and I'll go down to forty also, just so we can cover the cost of the bet at least.
I agree.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to the hot fund. So, first up is Black Cultural Council. Former Councilman Joanne Davenport-Littleton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Joanne Davenport-Littleton. I live at ten oh five Pine Avenue, Odessa, Texas, seven nine seven six three. We want to thank the council for all that they do for our organization and all they do for our community. This past weekend, we celebrated our Juneteenth celebration. It was a very trying year. Last year was trying, this year was trying. On Friday night, we had a great turnout. We had the Dallas Black Dance Theaters, at the Ector Theater in conjunction with the Odessa Council for the Arts, Randy Hamm. It was a great venture. If you weren't out there, you missed it. The theater was packed. They'd opened the balcony. It was a beautiful sight to see Odessans coming together for one common cause. Saturday, we had a great time. Sunday, we had a great time. I know many of you know that a couple of days ago, Juneteenth became a national holiday. And for many years now, Odessa has, has the title of having the largest organized Juneteenth celebration. And now that it's a national holiday, our community, we're nervous. We're very nervous. And we're scared. Because every time we come before the council to, to ask for funds, we get met with little oppositions that, what do you do? Or why does it take so much money? Or, I mean, all we want is a little respect. That's what we want. Because we feel that Juneteenth is more than barbecue and watermelon. Juneteenth is a celebration of our heritage. And many people don't think that. They think that it's just one big party, but it's not. Now, some of you have been on the council before. And to Councilman Willis, we thank you because every time we have an event, you're there to support us. We can't vote for you. But we can vote for Ms. Swanner, Mark Mada, and the mayor. We can vote for them. And we're nervous because some of you, this is your first time on council. And you may not know what Juneteenth is about. All you may know is what you've been told. But we welcome you to come to our events to see what we're about. And you haven't. So, now you're fixing to sit up and vote on how much money that we get. Our prayer is that you realize that we do have the largest celebration. And people come from everywhere to be a part of our celebration. And now that it's a national holiday, we need the monies. We need the funding. If we're going to be bigger and better and we're going to represent Odessa and we're going to work with other organizations like Odessa, Council for the Arts, it takes funding to bring the arts to Odessa. But please just remember, we're not just a party with barbecue. We're not just a party with barbecue and watermelon. We're not.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, but we do.
Thank you.
We do want y'all to, we like for y'all to vote for us to some money, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up will be Briar Patch Trade Days.
Do we get to ask questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions or comments?
You want to ask me a question? Oh, thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I'd just like to ask, along with Juneteenth, some, could you highlight some, just, or name some of the other things that this funding is for?
Yes, ma'am. We also host the annual Martin Luther King Celebration. And then we have a Black History Scholarship Banquet where we recognize seniors in our community and we award them with scholarships.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, we're going to move on to item number eight, Briar Patch Trade Days. Diane Hamilton?
My name is Diana Hamilton. I live at twelve oh nine Kilborn in Rankin, Texas. I am from Odessa originally, just recently moved to Rankin. So, I do want to thank everybody for giving us the opportunity to even be considered or for this grant. If awarded, a Briar Patch would use this grant to help continue to bring businesses to Odessa, or business to Odessa. When we host our event, for those who don't know, we do a Trade Days twice a year at the Coliseum. We've been doing it since two thousand and eight and we've continued to grow and sustain on our own for this time. Along with the help from the Discover Odessa helps us with our packets. They help with our vendors in getting hotels. We bring in the hotel, you know, taxes. And, and when those vendors are here, they shop at the local stores. If they forgot something, they eat something. They're here for two to three nights on, on average. As we, we reach out now, we're trying to go to more communities and do a little more events there. But then also our advertising, we've realized that our advertising and things need to be out in the outside communities so that we can reach more to get them to come this way. But with our current fundings, we are just at our limit of all that we can do without going up on our prices. It's not a whole lot for a, for a booth, but if we go up much, then those vendors will have to decide, can they even do the event? Or if they do the event, will they spend that extra night in the hotel? Or will they, you know, have that extra day to spend shopping? And I feel like it might keep some of the vendors from, from staying or doing any of that. And for coming in maybe for just one night, which would not help us nor get, you know, getting them into Odessa to see what Odessa has to offer. And so, obviously, from Rankin, we don't have a whole lot over there now.
We have that haunted museum.
We do, and it is, I believe it is haunted, but we have some really cool artwork on the side of some buildings. But we don't have an awesome, we don't have a chamber at all. So, that's really cool that this is something that could be offered. I wish I'd have known about it earlier, but.
Any questions or comments?
I do. Your entry fee is free, correct?
We don't charge an entry fee. The entry fees, fee is free. We, we have expanded to two buildings. We did go up a little bit on our vendor booth fees, but we've been able to keep those right at the same amount for several years now, so. And I believe we bring, I mean, I can't compete with, you know, some of the big places. I mean, the big events. But for a small, home-owned event, we bring in a pretty good crowd, I feel.
And your average number of vendors?
Of vendors? We have two hundred and forty-eight booths. I'm going to say about a hundred and sixty vendors. Some vendors have more than one booth.
And your average attendance?
Last year was a little rough, although I think we still maintained. I, I think we've seen upwards between thirty-seven hundred to five thousand, depending on what else is going on in the city and at the time. I am at a cap of, I can't go any bigger because of the Coliseum grounds won't let me rent the grounds because there's always something else, you know, going on. And there's not another place that, in Odessa, that can hold what we need, what we need done.
That's been pretty consistent.
We have, we've been, this is our thirteenth year. We're super excited and we're still having fun, so.
And y'all are for-profit, right? You're not a nonprofit?
We're for-profit, correct.
Any more questions or comments?
Okay, thank you.
The Comerative Air Force High Sky Wing. Gina?
Yes. Hello, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for this opportunity. You know, the airshow is a unique venue that we have. You have to go at least five hours to see another airshow at our, in our surroundings. And we bring in a lot of people, a lot of outside people. Our goal is not only to bring the community in, but to bring it in nationwide. We were unable to have a show last year because of the COVID. But in twenty nineteen, we saw visitors that came from sixty-eight cities outside a hundred mile radius of Odessa. And they came from eighteen states and three foreign countries. So, we feel like our venue is something that is able to bring participation into the community. And these people do get hotel rooms and we are helping out in that area. We've already spoken with the Discover Odessa. And this year at our show, they're going to help us better qualify the room nights that we spend. So, we'll have a better, better tracking system. They're going to be at the hotels on that. So, we know that we'll have better numbers. The numbers that I gave you now are from our ticket sales, which show where the people come from. So, that helps us a lot. Again, we couldn't do this without your help and your support, but the advertising is the critical issue to, to get out to the community, to the nation, to bring all of these individuals into our wonderful area. And as a side note, just wanted to say, this is our thirtieth airshow to produce for the community. And we're going to have a free airshow. It's a big endeavor, but we are raising funds. If anyone would care to contribute, please see me. But this year will be a free airshow for our community. We want to say thank you and give back to the people that have supported us. I know twenty nineteen was a rough, this has been a rough start. And thank you for what you've done. It's also going to commemorate the twentieth anniversary of ninety-eleven and our airshow will fall on September eleven and twelve. But we would appreciate your help and support. Could I answer any questions?
Castle?
How many, how many, you say, how many foreign countries have attended?
It depends. Last year, we had three. And sometimes we, and I'm, we're talking France, Mexico's always a, here at the show. We have a Swiss contingency that comes about every other year. We've had Belgium, we've had the United Kingdom, Britain. You know, it's, it's just amazing. I'm amazed. So, we have a lot of photographers that are well-known and renowned that come as well. And we had an article in one of the British magazines about the airshow. So, we do bring different people in. And it's a nice, community, family-oriented event.
Sure.
And it's free this year.
It's going to be free this year.
This year, yeah.
No excuses.
I know. Come see us. Anything else I could answer?
Anything else, Council?
All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Next item is Downtown Odessa, Luana Lambert.
Alexa.
Alexa now.
Oh, it's Alexa, I'm sorry. Well, my list is outdated. Who gave us this list?
Mine's the same as yours.
Okay. It's not me, I'm reading that off of there. I'm sorry, Alexa, go ahead.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you guys for having me. I wanted to take a moment to let you know about Downtown Odessa Inc. and what it is that we actually do. With a focus on revitalizing and promoting the downtown area, we are a small but really mighty nonprofit organization. We holder partner with at least one event every month besides September, bringing upwards of twenty thousand people per event to the doors of these small mom and pops businesses that you see downtown. Even during COVID times, we did not stop and just put our heads in the sand. We were able to pivot and still engage with the public, promote our businesses, and bring traffic to downtown by utilizing virtual or socially distant events. Events such as our virtual scavenger hunts engage folks from as far as Pecos and Big Springs to come downtown and spend their dollars here in Odessa. In a typical year, when we are able to host our normal lineup of events, we see attendance of well over eighty thousand people, including attendees from regions such as Dallas, Lubbock, San Angelo, and more, putting heads in beds and utilizing many of our area hotels and making us one of the most prolific event organizers in the basin. As an organization, we also utilize many different area hotels for our own vendors and performers. So, it's not just the attendees that utilize our hotels. That being said, none of this would be possible if not for hotel occupancy tax funding, the support of private donors and sponsors, and what at times can seem like a small army of amazing and dedicated volunteers. This funding allows us to reach all different types of folks and put on quality programming that continues to draw crowds. We look towards empirical data to show the effectiveness of our efforts. So, beyond attendance numbers, a few facts that I would like to highlight for you tonight. In less than three years, we have earned over two point four million impressions on Snapchat using geofilters. We have grown our Facebook following from slightly over two thousand to over ten thousand. We have grown our Instagram following from three hundred to nearly two thousand. We have developed amazing relationships with local media that often garners free promotion for our events and downtown happenings, including having done nearly a hundred news interviews between TV, newspaper, and radio. For the past five years, we have consistently seen new, more new businesses opening in downtown, including twelve that opened in twenty twenty, even despite COVID. Downtown Odessa Inc. is more than simply just one project or a couple of events here and there. We have a mission to grow, engage, and amplify everything downtown can be for the betterment of all Odessa. Thank you, guys.
Any questions or comments for Alexa? Did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fiesta West Texas, Odessa Productions, Richard Espersa, Andrea Quiros.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the City of Odessa, the Mayor, the Councilmen for taking time to listen to us and for the past donations. Fiesta West Texas is an Odessa event that has been celebrating in the weekend of Cinco de Mayo since May of nineteen ninety-five, drawing crowds of over thirty thousand. We utilize the forty-two acres of Yector County Coliseum Fairgrounds. The three-day event festival engages the audience with several events that feature nightly concerts every night on the main stage, local food exhibitors. This year, we have exhibitors coming in from New Mexico, El Paso, from all over, especially from New Mexico because they were closed for business. So, they came down here to, to bring their food exhibits. We have shows with local schools, especially UTPB, that always brings in their folklorical dancers for daily shows. The cheerleading comes out every year and several other school performances. Interactive animal shows. We bring in a sea lion show from Florida that, you know, a lot of kids in this area would never get to see. We've got children's pageants. We had a cornhole tournament, which had two hundred teams, over four hundred entries that came from Lubbock, Fort Stockton, all the surrounding area. The importance of Fiesta in Odessa is to create a positive impact, economic impact, and focus on our community while still having fun. It generates money and spending by non-local visitors that come in from the area. We have a lot of people coming in from El Paso. There was a form there which shows you where the tickets are bought and it shows how many different counties. Also, it keeps local money. It keeps locals spending money here local, that they don't have to go somewhere else for the festivals during Cinco de Mayo. They spend their money here locally. Festivals are important to the livelihood of any community. And what we want to share, the Fiesta spirit and the spirit of our community through the region. Fiesta is something to be proud of. It has been layers of family tradition. It is something that should be enjoyed and it's helped define a part of our community and a part of the city. Fiesta is Odessa. It is named Fiesta West Texas, but it is Odessa. We want to thank you for being a part of Fiesta West Texas and we hope we continue with our tradition.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Espersa, what's your average entry fee for Fiesta?
Tickets start anywhere from twelve dollars to eighteen dollars.
Twelve to eighteen.
Just to give you an idea, just to rent the Coliseum grounds for those three days is over twenty thousand dollars. The shares, we use all local shares. That's another eighteen thousand dollars just in three days.
Any more questions or comments? Thank you, sir. The Odessa Jackalope's Junior Hockey. I'm not going to name names because all these are wrong now. Is it Donnie?
No.
Yeah, you see? Yeah, you see?
My name's Kevin Hensley. I'm the Assistant Director of our Odessa Junior Jacks. Donnie's out of town today. Last year was probably our best year we've had in probably ten years. Uh, we hosted over four hundred games this last season, uh, three major tournaments. We had teams coming from Texas, Oklahoma, New Mexico, Colorado. Uh, because the states, other states that were shut down, they had to go have somewhere else to go play. So, um, we had over four hundred games, um, three major tournaments. Um, we actually have six players from our team last year who are actually gonna go play at a higher level of hockey thanks to our program. It's my first time doing this, guys. So...
You wanna hold it against you, it won't be great.
I don't know what else y'all wanna know, really.
Then you're gonna have a great season coming up.
I, I hope so. Um, we, we look to host another four ma, we're looking to host another four tournaments this year. We're looking to bring in more teams this season than what we have in the past because of our hospitality that we hosted last season. A lot of, a lot of areas that didn't look at Odessa and Midland as your go-to place for hockey, now they're looking at us like, hey, we need to go here. We actually hosted a team from Vegas last season that came in and, um, they were very appreciative of everything that Odessa gave to them.
Well, how, how long is your season?
Uh, we actually start in September, we end in March to April.
Okay.
Is whenever our season is.
How many home games?
Home games? Um, it depends on the team. Um, we have seven teams that play in the Dallas Stars Travel League, uh, which we bring teams in from Dallas, uh, San Antonio, Austin. We host probably each team fifteen to twenty home games a season. And then we have another team that plays in the Rio Grande High School Hockey League, which is our basically JV and varsity hockey of, like our JV and varsity football.
What's your age groups on your, on your?
We actually have a Dallas Stars Learn to Play program, starts at five years old, goes up to eighteen years old. Um, we team up with the Dallas Stars. They can pay a hundred and forty-nine dollars to the Dallas Stars. It gives them all their gear, gives them eight private lessons with Donnie Margetti, ex-professional, and some other ex-pros he has stuck around in Odessa.
How long has the Jackalopes been here?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years. I have the, the narcoleptus.
How many, how many children do you, how many kids do you have in your program?
We have two hundred kids roughly in our program.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Do you offer scholarships for this one forty-nine for those who may be interested in hockey but may not totally afford it? Are there scholarship opportunities?
We do have sponsors who, if, if a player cannot afford, we do have sponsors who, who basically sponsor a player. Um, a lot of our ex-CHL players who have stuck around, um, because they want hockey to stay in West Texas. If they have a player that comes across and he doesn't have the funds, then they will sponsor that player.
And I know you said your age group is five to eighteen and just quite, quite honestly, you know, I've been to hockey games, but growing up, hockey was not the sport I watched. So do you, how do you promote it? And, you know, do you go in the schools? Do you, you know, so you can introduce the little five-year-olds that this may be something you wanna?
Um, a lot of our promotion is thanks to the Odessa Jackalopes. You know, we are associated with the Odessa Jackalopes. We do a lot of promotions at, at the Jackalopes Games where youth hockey comes out during intermissions. Um, and the Jackalopes players with our NOL program go into the schools and promote hockey and then the kids go home and start talking about it. And next thing you know, we've got kids asking other kids at school, you know, and because we do have two hundred kids throughout our program, they're at every school in the city and they, one kid starts talking to another kid and...
But you, you guys do go into the school?
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna go on to, uh, the Junior League of Odessa.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Bree. I don't know what name you have listed there. Okay. My name is Bree Fraser. I'm with the Junior League of Odessa and we are very proud, excited, and so pleased to be bringing our Merry Marketplace back this year. This will be our thirty-eighth annual event. Our theme this year is merry and bright, so we're excited about brightening up everybody's holiday season. Um, we feel like we're bringing Christmas back because we feel like we canceled Christmas last year. So Merry Market is our primary and largest fundraising event that the Junior League of Odessa hosts. Um, this year it will be from November fourth through the seventh, so it's a three-day event. We have, um, approximately eighty booths and in each booth there is anywhere between two to three vendors, almost all of which come from out of town. We do have some local vendors, but the majority of the vendors are all from out of town. Um, we actually even have some coming from Oklahoma, Arizona, Ohio, Tennessee, New York, California, just to name a few. Um, so all of them, we're excited to bring back this year. We roughly have about forty thousand shoppers. We're actually anticipating maybe even upwards of forty-four thousand this year, so we're excited about that. Our event will kick off on Thursday evening with our preview party. Will be followed on Friday with our ladies' luncheon and style show and then the shopping begins Friday, um, afternoon and then goes through Sunday. So as I'm sure you guys are all aware, with this being our biggest fundraiser, all of these funds go right back into our community through our projects, community assistance funds, community grants. So, um, any donation and support you guys can give us is greatly appreciated. Any question?
Questions and comments?
What are the sum of the ways you put it back into the community?
So the biggest majority of it, I would definitely say, goes back through our community assistant funds. Um, this year, we actually, well, this spring, we just awarded those funds at our recent meeting. Um, they also tend to go towards our projects. This year, we're actually doing most of, um, we don't currently have any projects. Most of our, um, focus is actually internalizing with twenty twenty. We lost some of our memberships, so we're trying to refocus, restart, get our membership back up. That way, we can promote more volunteers, promote more leadership, and then hopefully we'll get some new projects underway.
Any more comments or questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Odessa Arts, Randy Han.
Hey, that one was right.
That was right.
That was right. Mr. Mayor, Council Representatives. On June fourth, the Ector Theater was filled to capacity for the free night of the West Texas Jazz Party, the world's longest-running jazz party right here in Odessa. Due to this success, the Jazz Society doubled their ticket sales for night number three. This past Friday, the Ector was again at capacity for a free performance of the Dallas Black Dance Theater in partnership with the Black Cultural Council for their Juneteenth celebrations. On Saturday, this Saturday, the MCM Fun Dome will be hosting a live art show. Hotel guests and the public will be able to watch local artists create work in real time while enjoying music and the occasional beverage. These events and more are made possible by continued support through hotel occupancy tax. Odessa Arts represents at least thirteen additional agencies who rely on this investment to bring world-class exhibits, theater, classical music, contemporary music, and dance to our cultural tourists and our community. Twenty twenty was a rough year. Twenty twenty started off just as bad, but our agencies continue to work partnering with hotels to create art in virtual and public spaces. The arts are also the only hard ca, hot category with a cap on the amount of funds that may be allocated at fifteen percent. The budget we submitted represents the maximum amount we can expect, but this is still a one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar reduction from last year. And we understand that money is tight and this budget reflects significant cuts in several areas. However, we also know that the arts will play a major role in increasing hotel revenue through overnight stays, conference room bookings, catering, and complimentary tickets for hotel guests. This revenue will also serve as a stamp of approval from our local government and be leveraged into grants from the Texas Commission on the Arts, the National Endowment for the Arts, local foundation support, and private investment. On July eighth, Odessa will play host to the Texas Music Office, our first step in becoming certified as a music-friendly community through the Office of the Governor. This will allow Odessa to capitalize on our local music scene while assisting us with booking touring musicians from across the state. It's part of our goal to help create an arts infrastructure that will help diversify our economy. In two thousand nineteen, the nonprofit arts sector generated six million dollars in economic activity for the City of Odessa through an investment of only seven hundred thousand dollars in hot money. Your investment today can help us entice our cultural tourists to spend one more day, eat one more meal, and spend one more dollar. These benefits will also spill over to enhance the quality of life of our community and I thank you for your continued support of the arts in Odessa.
Thank you very much. Any, uh, comment or questions for Randy? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Randy.
Discovery Odessa, Monica? I know that one.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. With gatherings beginning to take place again, it is more important now than ever for the Discover Odessa sales team to attend trade shows, sales conferences, and make, uh, state, state and local sales calls. The trade shows and sales conferences help our sales team gain the knowledge of industry trends and best practices. Some of the events that they'll be attending are the Texas Travel Counselors Conference, the Sports Events and Tourism Association Conference, Southwest Showcase, Texas Society of Association Executives. These events will let them reach, um, several meeting planners across the state that will allow them to talk to different associations, to request that they bring their event here to Odessa. And they'll also be speaking with Texas Travel Centers, there are eleven in, in Texas, uh, visitor centers, and state park representatives. And those people in particular touch and speak to thousands of visitors across the state. So it is our, um, it is our goal is to, to reach as many people as we can and to keep Odessa relevant with them. Another part of our budget is the convention and hospitality. This is the oil show year. We will be providing, Discover Odessa will be providing transportation to and from Ratliff to the Coliseum and also providing welcome bags with Odessa Literature and Odessa-branded giveaways to their seven hundred vendors. This is the first time that the oil show has allowed the City of Odessa to assist them with their event. They've never asked for assistance from Odessa, but they have been reached out to by other communities to try and recruit their event to their city. This is our way, the city's way, of showing them that we value their event here and that we want them to keep their event here and so we are providing that shuttle service again between, um, Ratliff and also within that, uh, the Coliseum. We're also working with four or five new conferences that will be coming to Odessa this year that are budgeted for, the TACBB Conference, the Texas Society of Professional Surveyors, Texas Municipal Education Center Conference, Texas Association of 4H Extension Youth Conference, and the North Texas District Optimist Conference. Just a few final reminders. Uh, Discover Odessa is the only organization who markets every aspect of the city, whether it's meeting space, sports facilities, local attractions, hotel accommodations, restaurants, whatever, this department provides the resources to all things Odessa. We are contracted, we are contacted by hotels and multiple organizations and individuals year-round requesting the resources needed to meet Odessa visitor needs. And secondly, we do hold ourselves accountable to the regulations of how hotel occupancy funds should be spent. We subscribe to an Economic Impact Calculator that gives us the return on investment so that we are being fiscally responsible to each investment in each event. We also have a system called IDSS that allows us to communicate with hotels requesting room nights that were picked up and the various events that we've assisted with. That was good. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments? That's gotta be worth something.
Right.
So no questions or comments? Okay, so we're just gonna move right into the next one?
Yes, sir. The, this is for the Sports Enhancement Recruitment Program. The objective of the SERP, it's also known as SERP, is to recruit visitors and travelers for sporting events from outside of Odessa. In two thousand ten, the City Council first allocated a hundred thousand dollars to the CBB at that time for this purpose. Recruiting sporting events will increase hotel and motel revenues, sales tax revenues, promote sports in Odessa area, and enhance the quality of life for its citizens. It should be noted that Discover Odessa is not in possession of this money. We are simply functioning as a pass-through for monies given to requested groups. Groups submit an application sixty days prior to their event and then a post-event form is required thirty days after their event and receipts also must be submitted. Groups are then awarded their money based on an assessment, again, given through the estimation of the Destination International Impact Calculator. This calculation provides the return on investment for groups and determines the financial impacts of various events on business, employment, income, and taxes. The Discover Odessa Sports Committee reviews that assessment and votes on the amount that will be awarded. The program has been very helpful for Discover Odessa sports specialist Teresa Vazquez to use this when recruiting sporting events to Odessa. Multiple groups have applied for this, um, amount, for this money and have benefited from it each year. This year, we do have four new groups that will be applying for that money and one that is a second-year group. We have the NJCAA Odessa College Basketball Tournament, the NJCAA, uh, National Golf Tournament, ECISD Soccer Tournament, the Crowd Pleasers Dance Competition, and the American Junior Golf Association. And this money, again, allows us to incentivize them and to hopefully, you know, continue to, their, keep their events here in Odessa. We do have returning applicants too that will be coming. That's the Odessa Soccer Association, Professional Bull Rider Association, Jujitsu Disc Golf Association, and the Odessa College Rodeo.
Any questions or comments for Monica?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job. Thanks, Monica.
Thank you.
The Odessa Jackalope Hockey Team.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the Council. I'm Rick Matchit. I'm the President of the Odessa Jackalopes. And as my cohort Kevin was talking about with the Junior Jacks, we time with them quite a bit, uh, over the years as well too. Um, we just wanna thank you for the funds that you've offered us in the past. We appreciate everything you've done for us and we're looking forward to the next year. Uh, as you know, last year was a very odd year. Uh, we didn't know if we were gonna have a season, uh, the pandemic and so on and so forth. Fortunately, our league, the NAHL, which has twenty-six teams nationwide, we were able to put together a season, um, with social distancing, of course, as well too. We have a, we had a full fifty-six game season, which gives us twenty-eight home games with fourteen weekends, um, that started in October and ended in May of twenty twenty-one. Due to the social distancing that we had to do for the teams and the hotels, we had to increase hotel rooms for them because we provide those for them at the elegante that we pay for. So to make sure that they were socially distanced in a room, there was only two per room. We also were able, because of our friendship and working with the, the team in El Paso, they, as you probably remember, El Paso had some dire straits of the pandemic and had issues. So they end up coming here and they rented ice time from us and they also stayed at the hotel. Um, they had over twenty-five nights, over thirty-two thousand dollars that they spent while they were in town for three weeks that they stayed. So that adding into, you know, what we'd already done with the, the teams as well too and the hotels. This is, we've just finished our twenty-fourth consecutive season of consecutive hockey in Odessa. This will be our twenty-fifth anniversary, so I'm inviting all of you right now to come out to see a game as we start our twenty-fifth anniversary season. Um, we host twenty-four to thirty young men that are sixteen to twenty years old that come to our city. They spend nine months of their life here with us. Uh, you may have heard of Connor Helbuck, Helbuck, that is also playing for the Winnipeg Jets that came from these very, this very city, Odessa Jackalopes. So we have a history. We want to continue that history. We enjoy being in Odessa. We wouldn't be any other place else. And we, we accept and we just acknowledge everything you've done for us and we look forward to what you do for us in the future. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
What's your average ticket price?
We go anywhere from seven dollars up to twenty-four dollars.
And do you, again, I'll ask you, do you reach out to the community, you know, to try?
Oh, yes. The big thing about junior hockey, what we need to do is we wanna reach out to the youth. We're, of course, last year was a very strange year, but I had talked to the superintendent of ECIS, ECISD about how we can get in the schools and we couldn't. Normally, we would do programs such as a reading program or a bullying program of sort, and also hockey and health. How do you get involved in hockey? What does it do for you health-wise? Because we think that's important. And so we've always reached out. We did, we've done stuff with the YMCA as well as the Boys and Girls Clubs and those types of places as well too because we wanna get them involved.
Any more questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Odessa Links, Erica Chavez.
It's Thomas now, but...
Okay, well, congratulations.
Thanks. Um, good, good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Erica Thomas. I'm the Executive Director of Odessa Links and I'm here on behalf of Odessa Links. Um, our agency is requesting funds for our Links Community Conference. We're now in our eighth year of bringing service professional content to Odessa through our conference. Over the years, we've built a strong following from attendees across the state. Over the years, we've built a strong following from attendees across the state and beyond. We've doubled our attendance over time. We've come a long ways since our, like, first 20 or so, just kind of creating that foundational work. We have grown so much that we've actually had to switch locations to accommodate more people. Our conference has a strong marketing team that maximizes the city funding that is received. So we do make sure every dollar is truly impactful in how we market our conference and how we recruit people to Odessa. Every year, we bring nationally-recognized speakers and interactive sessions to educate and engage our regional partners. As you could see in our application, just some of the previous conference topics we've had is trauma-informed care, bridges out of poverty, bridges to health. Last year, we had the, what is it called, Hope in Action, the Making of 1-800-SUICIDE. We've had TBRI. So really good content that we've been able to bring here locally, which for us in the region, you know, there's not too many conferences here out west. It's typically you-go-east to get that quality content. So we've been very fortunate that we can provide that for our community and our surrounding partners, and it's made us better service providers and really intentional. Whenever we assist someone, we are equipped with that training and those contact hours through that. I will say, I'd just like to thank you for the continued support over the years, and hopefully we'll see you at this year's conference, which is August 27. This year, we'll be bringing nationally-recognized speaker Aliyah Moreno. She's a published author. Her books include Living Intentionally with Poverty in Mind and Permission to Rest. I will say the content that we bring typically is on trend with what's going on in our community and across the state. So with this particular content, Permission to Rest, we touch on compassion fatigue. We touch on secondary trauma for first responders and service providers who are hearing, you know, just crisis or help on the other side of the line when you pick up the phone. So really great stuff that we've been able to bring. And thankfully, you know, even with last year with the pandemic, we were able to pivot. We were still able to bring that content, so we just want to keep that momentum and just keep it going. Are there any questions?
Council, any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you for what you do, and be sure to let me know about the Permission to Rest one.
Yes, definitely. All right, then that's everything. Thank you.
Parks Fall Festival, Mr. Patton?
Good evening, everybody. Steve Patton, Director of Parks Recreation, 1100 West 42nd. You know me, don't worry. All right. Fall Festival has been a big event for us for many years now and grows every single year that we've had a big production out at McKinney Park. This coming year, we are planning on doing a fall fun event rather than Fall Festival. We want to make sure that the participants are not in an active situation like they have been, where we have a lot of interaction between all the participants. We do want to have a production-type of event so that it will be more of a sit-down, a nice evening at the park, a lot of advertising in our surrounding communities as a destination point so that we'll have production. And we're looking at different talent that we'll have in the evening, and then we'll have a short movie rather than all the festivities that we normally have. We currently have $15,000 that was left over from last allocations as a startup for Fall Festival. Since COVID is still a threat, we'd like to go ahead and use the $15,000 for this particular event and use the proposed $15,000 for Fall Festival for next year and go with the full-blown-out Fall Festival that we usually have every year. Last attendance that we had was 35. We were hand-counting as many people as we possibly could. We had 3,500 to 4,000 people at any one time, one of the largest crowds that we've ever had as far as Fall Festival. And then we'll go right from Fall Festival. We start the very next day putting up Christmas lights. And that's a busy time of year for us, and real busy, as a matter of fact, and really excited about this coming year for Starbright Village. I do want to note that there was a little bit of a typo on the application. It got transferred over from the Fall Festival application. That's not $15,000. It's $136,000. A little bit of a difference in the price there. And I do want to say on what our game plan is for Starbright Village, last year was an incredible crowd. We have traffic counters out there, and we count vehicles at Starbright Village. We had 235,000 documented people go through Starbright Village. It is a destination point for all of West Texas. I've talked to people that pull in off of the interstate. We talk to people from El Paso on a regular basis, headed to Dallas, vice versa. Long conversation with a group that is going down the interstate from Alaska, and they were headed to the East Coast, and they pulled off and they said they were gonna grab something to eat and wanted to know where our nearest restaurant was, and they were back on the interstate headed to East Texas and then on to the East Coast. So one thing that's really kind of fun is one of our sister cities to the far west, El Paso, called me, and they said, "How did you start that?" Well, like, it didn't happen overnight. We've been working on this since about 1987. So, thank you. All right. So $136,000 is the request, not the $15,000, and that's the game plan for Starbright Village.
All right. Thank you for doing both of them. Thank you.
Thanks.
So we're gonna go to the Odessa USBC. All right, no? Odessa Institute of Crime Stoppers? No. Okay. Public Care Family Resilience Center?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Chandra Coleman, and I'm the Coordinator for the Family Resiliency Center of the Permian Basin. And in case you don't know who we are, I'll remind you. On August 31st of 2019, seven people were killed and 25 others were injured. As a result of that tragic event, our community was forever changed. Through a Victims of Crime Act grant from the Office of the Governor, our center was opened, and we provide services at no cost to anyone who was directly or indirectly affected by that event. Services we provide include counseling, alternative therapies like yoga, art, cooking, and coming-soon gardening classes. Again, everything we do is free. We provide community education, such as psychological first aid, skills for psychological recovery, and youth, adult, and teen mental health first aid classes. This year in March, for the first time, we were able to host a really incredible seminar for our first responders and their spouses. There is no cost to the departments who send their folks. This includes law enforcement at city, county, and state levels, as well as fire, rescue, EMS, and telecommunications. We were thrilled to host 37 participants. So that includes spouses from all over the state of Texas, with a predominant attendee group from Odessa and Ector County, as well as DPS local folks. We bring providers in from Law Enforcement Management Institute of Texas, which is out of Sam Houston State in Huntsville. And there's a team of 30 folks who volunteer their time for three days to come and provide services at no cost for these amazing heroes, men and women who put their lives on the line for all of us every day. We are requesting $7,500 to cover some of the expenses for hospitality items. We did this this year. You have the Event Impact Summary document in front of you. Shout out to Monica's people because they were a huge help for this event. But we will bring back the same number of people and estimate the same number of hotel nights because there is a cap on the number of participants. The really amazing thing about what happened this year is that although they capped us at 30 participants, we had seven extra people show up on day one, and we just brought them in. And so we partner with local hotels and restaurants and things like that to be able to provide this amazing service. Any questions or comments?
Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Okay.
So this looks like your first application with the city. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So since you bring up Discover Odessa and working with them, have you thought about working with them on your hospitality items?
Yes. So we actually worked with them this last year. We're hoping to do more. We have more warning this year because our event is in May of next year. And so we want it to be a bigger event because we want to really spotlight Odessa and how amazing it is to be here. We actually picked up extra nights and things like that, so we just want it to be a bigger event, and we will work with everyone we can.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any more questions or comments?
Thank you.
Permian Basin Fair and Expo?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Chris. I'm with the Permian Basin Fair and Expo. I'm the President for the 2021 Fair. You know, we run 10 days. We usually have 100-plus vendors. We run about 65,000 people. Or we have about 65,000 participants and community people that come through our fair. We've won over 135 advertising awards from TAFNE for our advertising. We do billboards and, you know, advertising all over the Permian Basin. We give away about $41,000 in scholarships to the area youth. This is our 45th anniversary year during the fair. We have 59 directors that we do, you know. As the directors, we do pay our dues into our fair to be committed as a member of our fair, and we have two part-time employees. You know, we are asking $150,000 like we have in the past. We do greatly appreciate everything y'all have helped us with. And is there, do you have any questions?
Questions and comments? I think we pretty much well know who you guys are. Thank you. All right, we got the Sand Hills Stock and Show Rodeo.
I'll go with whatever name you've got there in case this doesn't go so well.
Billy Bob Jim Bob.
That's right.
All right, I am here representing the Sand Hills. My name is Jim Wise, and I'm currently the President. And we had a hard time deciding we were gonna have a show last year with everything going on. And I want to shout out to Monica and her team, Teresa specifically, who works with us and chastises us and some other things. And then also the Jackalopes that made it possible. Some things that happened, we needed some space, and they took care of us, and want to thank them, so. But we did have, as a result of having this event, we had 20% more people come to enter our rodeo than had in the past, and we had 30% more livestock people come to enter. And I think a lot of that had to do with, everybody heard the news about canceling rodeos and livestock shows, and so I think we were the beneficiary of all of that. And we had a budget that we cut tremendously last year, obviously, because of this. We were down to 39% of the capacity of the auditorium for ticket sales. So, but, once again, I'd like to shout out to our community because they came on board and supported us. People came to donate that hadn't before. People that were struggling in business came to support. Our community came and bought tickets. We had to, because of the seating, we couldn't let our season ticket holders have their seats without irritating someone, so we didn't sell any season tickets. And those seats were filled up with people that hadn't been to our rodeo before and supported it. So I gotta say that our community is a wonderful community, and they certainly came out and supported it at a time in spite of the fact that we didn't have any council people riding livestock at the rodeo this year.
I do, I would like to recommend my friend, Tom.
We'll take you, Tom. So, any questions?
Questions or comments?
All right. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Jim.
The Hana Super Show, Nick Hernandez Senior?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For those that don't know me, I'm Nick Hernandez. What began in the dusty, dirty roads of South Odessa 50 years ago has now become one of the most prestigious car shows in America, right here in Odessa, Texas. So the tradition continues this November. It is a, the whole weekend, Friday through Sunday. Auto enthusiasts come all the way from Los Angeles to Corpus, and they do rent a lot of hotel rooms. Last year, we had 50 rooms blocked at the new hotel and 50 over at the Fondo. And that's just what my company blocked off, and that's over the weekend. We have like three, last year, we did have a show. And I think our show was one of the only one events that was able to go on towards November. And we didn't have any problems or anything. Nobody got sick. We had a good plan that we put into use. But we do book every single building in the Coliseum. All the buildings are packed with cars and vendors. We do over 300 to 400 cars and vendors in the event. What I wanted to talk about, if I don't run out of time, is about the money that I'm requesting, the $92.575. I don't really need that much money. I'll tell you why. Because I'm not allowed to pay for rent or insurance or tickets or any of those things. I'm restricted to media advertising. So $92.575 is a lot of money just to, I don't need that advertising. You know, the reason that I do the $92.575 is because I've been getting $50,000. And then I think one year I requested 50, and I got 20. So I went back up to $92. So I went back up to the $92.575, hoping that I'll get at least 40. So that's, I guess that's just the way it works. So I'm hoping that I can at least get close to $40,000 this year or more if you allow me to pay other than media advertising.
So your advertising is about...
Which will really help me.
Any questions or comments?
So your advertising is about $40,000?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No. That's good.
Yeah, it's like my friend Tom, he goes, "There's a point where you just start overselling it, so..."
Thank you.
Now, that was hilarious. Texas Winner?
Honesty, man. I like it.
Texas Winners not here? That sounds like a name. Texas Winner?
Sounds like a...
It's an oxymoron for this rant. Going once, going twice. Texas Winner last time? UTPB Athletics? Casey Carson?
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Casey Carson, and I am here representing the University of Texas Permian Basin, specifically the Department of Athletics. We are so appreciative of the support the city has provided to us in the past, and I certainly hope that you are as proud to have UTPB in Odessa as we are to be a part of this wonderful city. I think we can all agree that athletics and sporting events are a big part of our West Texas culture. UTPB Athletics is made up of 16 intercollegiate sports teams. We have more than 400 student athletes from all across the country and beyond who are enrolled in classes and playing the sports that they love. Those student athletes have friends and family who travel to Odessa to watch them compete. We are a part of the Lone Star Conference, which is made up of 18 schools from across Texas, Oklahoma, New Mexico, and Arkansas. All of these teams travel by bus, so the vast majority of them stay overnight when they come for our home competitions, many of those for multiple nights. There is no doubt that UT Permian Basin Athletics generates hotel stays just from the opposing teams alone. With your help, we can better promote not only our events, but our city as a travel destination for friends and families of our student athletes and the opposing... for friends and families of our student athletes and the opposing team's student athletes. Right now, football is our biggest draw. It is estimated that one home football game generates two-hundred-and-twenty-five room nights and more than a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in business sales. While the other sports may not have the same impact per game, most of them have many more events per season. For example, we host five to six home football games each season. We host twice as many men's basketball games, twice as many women's basketball games. Our baseball and softball teams typically play in a series of three games for each opponent. So that's teams staying for multiple nights in our hotels. We are constantly working to increase our corporate sponsorships and donor base to be able to elevate the experience at each UTPB Athletics event. As we grow, recruiting becomes more effective, our teams are more successful, and more people want to come to Odessa to play, to watch, to go to school. And hopefully, some of them will stay and become good citizens and neighbors. In closing, athletics is the window to the University of Texas Permian Basin. We're a visible department. As athletics grows and improves, UTPB grows and improves and is better able to provide an educated workforce for our local businesses. This will come as a shock to no one. I believe partnering with UT Permian Basin Athletics is a worthwhile investment that will have positive dividends for years to come, and I hope that you agree. Thank you for your time, and again, we truly appreciate you.
Thank you, Casey. Any, any questions or comments? Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
West Texas Track Club?
You're good. Mayor, Council, thank you for your time. My name is Eugene Niebo, Junior. Senior is sitting there behind me. I'm one of the coaches for West Texas Track Club that is run by my parents, Eugene Stella Niebo. Just giving you a quick overview, it looks like a lot of y'all are new. So, West Texas Track Club is originally started to combat childhood obesity in the area, to provide a safe haven for kids to be active and remember wars and just have a fun environment. Over the years, we've definitely grown. Just to put in perspective, I remember when I started with our tiny tots, 'cause we have ages two to eighteen years old. I remember when I started with the tiny tots when I was eighteen. So that's about thirteen years ago, we had eight kids, just brothers and sisters of the older kids, our seven-to-eighteen-year-olds, who were practicing. So, just to keep them occupied, we take them through drills and do other things just to stimulate them. As of the year before COVID, so twenty nineteen, we had two-hundred-and-seventy tiny tots registered. This year alone, we've had six-hundred-and-seventeen total kids registered for our track club. About fifty-five percent of that's tiny tots, so low over three hundred, and the rest are older kids. So just thank you for your support up to this point. It's definitely been going to the community. We actually just had our Nick Morales meet this past weekend. We were able to reward five thousand dollars in scholarships, just divide over five people, a thousand dollars each. And we have our Dance Apparel Track Meet, and we're hoping to reward at least the same amount, if not more, this track meet.
Council, any questions or comments? How many events do you have annually?
We have two events annually. And we are actually, my parents are going to Houston and Dallas to talk with the AAU regional coordinators. We are looking to bring the AAU Regional Meet here to Odessa, Texas within the next couple of years. As we know, we were able to bring the USATF Track Meet here about twenty-sixteen. That was a four- or five-day event, which generated plenty of revenue. I think it was north of two million dollars for Odessa. So we're, we're hoping to bring the AAU Meet, it'll be similar format, about a week-long event, bringing teams from Dallas, Houston, and El Paso.
Good, excellent.
Very good.
Any questions, comments?
I'd just like to comment to the, to those who are present, if you've not experienced one of their track meets, when they talk about two-to-five-year-olds and you're talking five hundred of them? You're talking no kid left behind. They're crying, they're running, they're, they're slinging snot. But, but they keep going, I mean, and so it, to me, it's, it's training for the world area.
It's great birth control for me at the moment, too.
That's a commercial right there.
That's worth what he's asking right there.
Wow, that's gotta be worth something.
Yeah, sir.
But I know, I know Dad's ready for some grandkids, so.
You have to keep waiting for me.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
White Pool House Friends?
Hello, I'm Christine Holcomb, and I'm with the White Pool House Board of Directors. And I had a beautiful, wonderful speech ready. And then I looked around again and I thought, you know, I better reintroduce who we are. So I have my speech written around the margin, so here we go. First, I wanted to, that speech had to do with why history is important. But first, let me tell you where we started a few years ago. We nearly lost our museum, okay? This is our history, our foundation, your cornerstone. We were getting about three hundred people through a year, mostly ourselves. We passed the hat to pay the help. And thanks to the city and a lot of really great people, we've turned it around. And now we've got about ten thousand people through a year. And many with our, many of these people with our wedding events are out-of-town guests. And it's a natural, you know, you're always gonna have out-of-town guests. We figure somewhere around two, twenty-five hundred to three thousand hotel nights is generated by our events. And we have foreign countries, visitors from foreign countries through our events, and of course, cultural tourism. One neat thing we can say is that we do get a lot of people through, even locally, that would never have come to a museum. They come to our events and we offer tours during the events, and they come walking away proud of Odessa and all we've accomplished. We get also to dispel a lot of historic inaccuracies about Odessa and the Permian Basin. This year, we'll be participating in the Smithsonian Waterways Project. I encourage you to attend, it's a partnership with Midland and Odessa and the importance of water. I think we can all agree, that's a very hot topic. We've also been featured on a documentary, a PBS documentary, featuring our former president, George W. Bush. We love to bridge the generations with the kids. Maybe, maybe you didn't like history as a child, but we try to bring it alive and real to kids. We have hands-on things that they participate with. One of the things, most popular things, is the old telephone. And we have people in their twenties that have never used a rotary dial, and we have lots of fun with those people. So anyway, but we're all hands-on, we have events, and we're a busy little place on the weekends. Thank you. Any questions?
Comments? Thank you very much.
Sure.
Are we doing item thirty-four?
No, that, that's through an interlocal agreement with the Coliseum. Yes, so we're done with.
Okay, real quick, before we start the District One, can we take five minutes of a break?
Sure.
Because I definitely need it. We'll be recessed, five minutes, we'll be back, and we'll start the process. Just be, just bear with us, okay? All right, so we're back, thank you for that five minutes, real quick. We're gonna go ahead and keep the, the current trend as we were doing. And we will start with District One, City Councilman Mark Matha.
Starting with the BCCO? Seventy-five thousand? Just go down all?
Yeah.
Okay. Briar Patch? Five thousand? CAF, fifty? Downtown Odessa, four fifty? Fiesta West Texas, forty? Jackalope Junior, twenty? Junior League, twenty? Odessa Arts, five seventy-two? Discover Odessa, nine eighty-two, four fifty? The SERP, sixty-five? Odessa Jackalope's Team, forty-five? Odessa Link, seven thousand? Parks Fall Festival, fifteen? Starbright Village, one thirty-six? And USBC, zero? Permian Care Families Resilience Center, seventy-five hundred? Permian Basin Fair and Expo, one fifty? Sand Hills Rodeo, one twenty-five? The Hondo Super Show, forty? Texas Winter, zero? UTPB Athletics, one hundred? West Texas Track Club, fifty-five? And White Pool House, sixty-two, five?
Where does that put him, real quick?
One, one oh five, over.
One oh five, over?
Three, uh, three million, one oh five.
Okay. Mr. Thompson?
Seventy-five thousand, Black Cultural Council? I've got zero on the second one. Briar Patch. CAF, fifty thousand? Downtown Odessa, four fifty? What's the next, I'm sorry?
Fiesta West Texas.
Fiesta West, I'm sorry. I'm trying to read between this, I, I can see glasses on, I can see the heaven, I can't see this. Excuse me. Fiesta West Texas. I lost it.
Number twelve.
Twelve, thank you. I've got thirty? Odessa Jackalope Junior Hockey, fifteen? Junior League, fifteen? Odessa Arts, five seventy-five? Discover Odessa? Got nine eighty-five? And Discover Odessa SERP, sixty-five? Jack, Jackalope's Hockey, sorry, fifty thousand? Odessa Links, fifteen? Parks Fall Festival, fifteen? Starbright Village, one thirty-six? Starlight Village, one thirty-six. Odessa USBC, zero. Odessa Student Crime Stoppers. Nope.
Number twenty-four.
Oh, I'm on the wrong one. Primakare, seventy-five hundred, thank you. Permian Basin Fair and Expo. One twenty-five. Rattler for Ants Golf Links. Oh, Sand Hills, I'm sorry. Sand Hills Stock Show, one hundred. Tahana Super Show, forty. Texas Winter. UTPB Athletics, a hundred.
What did you say for Texas Winter, I'm sorry?
Zero.
Zero.
Don't show up, you don't get paid.
UTPB Athletics?
UT Athletics, fifty-five? No, I'm sorry. UTP Athletics, I've got a hundred, I'm sorry. And then the West Texas Track Club, fifty-five. White Pool House, fifteen.
Councilman Spals?
All right. For Black Cultural Council, I have seventy. I have five thousand for the Briar Patch. Fifty thousand for Commemorative Air Force. Downtown Odessa, four fifty. Fiesta West Texas, I have thirty. Junior Jackalopes, I have ten. Junior League, I have fifteen. Odessa Arts, I have five fifty. Discover Odessa, nine fifty. Serp is sixty. Odessa Jackalopes, I have thirty. For Odessa Links, I have fifteen. For the Parks Fall, I have fifteen. Starlight Village, I have one thirty. For Bowling, I have fifteen. For Permian Care, I have six thousand. The Permian Basin Fair, I have one twenty-five. Sand Hills, I have one hundred. Car Show, I have twenty-five thousand. Texas Winter, zero. UTPB gets a hundred thousand. West Texas Track Club gets fifty-five thousand. And Pool House gets forty thousand, White Pool House.
Councilwoman Willis?
Black Cultural Council of Odessa, seventy-five. Briar Patch Trade Days, five thousand. Commemorative Air Force, fifty thousand. Downtown Odessa, four hundred and fifty thousand. Fiesta West Texas, forty thousand. Odessa Jackalopes Junior, ten thousand. Junior League of Odessa, fifteen thousand. Odessa Arts, five hundred and seventy-two thousand. Discover Odessa, nine hundred eighty-two, four fifty. Discover Odessa Serp, sixty thousand. Odessa Jackalopes Hockey, forty thousand. Odessa Links, fifteen thousand. Parks Festival, fifteen thousand. Starlight Village, one hundred and thirty-six thousand. Odessa USBC, zero. Permian Care Resiliency Center, seventy-five hundred. Permian Basin Fair and Expo, one hundred and fifty thousand. Sand Hills Stock Show and Rodeo, one twenty-five thousand. Tahana Super Show, forty thousand. Texas Winter, zero. UTPB Athletics, one hundred thousand. West Texas Track Club, fifty-five thousand. White Pool House, forty thousand. That's it.
Councilwoman Swann?
Black Culture Council, seventy-five. Briar Patch, five thousand. CAF, fifty thousand. Downtown Odessa, four fifty. Fiesta West Texas, forty. Odessa Jackalopes Junior, twenty. Junior League of Odessa, twenty. Odessa Arts, five seventy-two. Discover Odessa, nine eighty-two, four fifty. Discover Odessa Serp, sixty-five. Odessa Jackalopes Hockey, forty. Odessa Links, ten. Parks Fall Festival, fifteen. Starlight Village, one thirty-six. Permian Care, seventy-five hundred. Permian Basin Fair, one fifty.
Hold on, what?
Oh, I skipped. Odessa USB, zero.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Permian Basin Fair.
Yes, so Permian Basin Fair, one fifty. Sand Hills Stock and Rodeo, one twenty-five. Tahana Super Show, thirty. UTPB Athletic, oh, Texas Winter, zero. UTPB Athletics, a hundred. West Texas Track Club, fifty-five. And White Pool House, sixty-two, five.
Okay, so Black Cultural Council, seventy-five. Briar Patch will be five thousand. Commemorative Air Force, fifty. Downtown Odessa, four fifty. Fiesta West Texas, forty. Junior Jax Youth, ten. Junior League of Odessa, twenty. Odessa Arts. We'll go with the five seventy-two. Discover Odessa, nine fifty. Discover Odessa Sports Event, sixty. Odessa Jackalopes Hockey, forty. Odessa Links. Trying to keep my space here, fifteen. Odessa Parks Festival, fifteen. Starlight Village, one thirty-six. USBC, zero. Primakare, seventy-five. Expo, go with one fifty. Sand Hills, one twenty-five. Tahana Super Show, forty. Zero on the Texas Winter, UT Permian Athletics, a hundred. Fifty-five, West Texas Track Club. White Pool House, we'll go forty. Okay.
So we don't have consensus on Junior Jax Youth Hockey, Junior League of Odessa. Discover Odessa, Discover Odessa Sports Events and Recruitment.
Okay, so let's start from the top. No consensus on... Hold on. Slow down popcorn, you're going fast. I heard that a long time ago. I've been waiting like years to use that. So we're Junior Jax Youth Cup. Okay, so... Anybody want to make a concede?
Um, Jackalope Junior, I'll give you ten thousand.
Jackalope Junior, I'll go to ten thousand.
All right, we can go to Junior League of Odessa now?
Junior League, fifteen.
Discover Odessa? We have three ninety-eight, nine eighty-two, four fifties, two nine fifties, and one nine eighty-five.
You can make mine nine eighty-two, four fifty.
Sports events? We have three sixty thousands and three sixty-five dollars.
Split around the middle, one flip for it.
I'll go to sixty.
Odessa Jackalope's Hockey, we have three at forty, one at forty-five, one at fifty, and one at thirty.
I'll do forty.
I'll go to forty.
And White Pool.
White Pool House, we got three at forty, two at sixty-two, five, and one at fifteen.
I'll go to forty.
I'll go to forty as well. What was our overall total?
I have three million sixty-five.
What was it? Say it again.
Three million sixty-five, five forty-nine.
Yeah, close. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the hot fund allocations for the upcoming budget year?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mata, a second by Councilman Thompson. All in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes. Congratulations. I was skeptical right there towards the whole thing if we were going to get that at the end. Before we move on on this item, I know we've done the allocations, but pretty much everybody that filled out cards spoke. Is there anybody that wants to add anything else that they didn't say? All right, thank you very much, everybody. I'm sure you're not going to stay for the rest of the exhilarating meeting. Be safe, going home. Just give us a minute and then we'll move on with the agenda.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. I've been here a long time, so.
You're welcome. It's a good cause, we try.
Thank you.
You bet, it's not you.
I get tired in my brain. No, I had it all written down, but...
Yeah, but I mean...
No, I can see that with these, but I can't see my small.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on to item number seven. It is to consider approval employing the law firm of Cotton Bledsoe, Teague and Dawson, P.C., Brockett and McNeil, L.L.P., Keith Stretcher to represent the city of Odessa in a lawsuit with Aim Media, LLC, DVA, the Odessa American. Council, do we have any discussion or comments? Seeing that there... Is it pertinent to what we're doing? Okay. So, seeing that there is no comments or discussion, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Willis. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Spals. All those in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Moving on to miscellaneous, item eight, appointment boards. Ms. Grimaldo?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We had a citizen comment card. Mr. Barnhill, did you still wish to speak?
If they have questions, they'll come up and speak, but we're just seeking the reenforcement.
Okay, okay, so for the boards and commissions, we had a resignation for the Midland-Odessa Urban Transit District. And that resignation was forward to council on Friday. The applications that I had on file, I had one application, Tim Harry is interested in serving on that board. Council did receive the application on Friday. For the Permian Care MHMR Board of Trustees, Margaret Jones is willing to continue to serve. We also had an applicant on file that was interested in serving, which was Arlo Chavarria. And those are the two names for consideration.
Okay, council, any discussion? Now, you said that Margaret Jones is willing to serve again?
Yes, that is correct, for the Permian Care.
And she's been, you have any idea how long she's been on there?
According to this, about nineteen ninety-six.
That's when I stuck around, but Margaret's been on our board since nineteen ninety-six. She's currently Chair of the Texas Council of Community Centers. That is kind of our state affiliation for our thirty-nine community centers, and she serves that for the rest of this year. So anyway, she's been a very excellent member and we really appreciate her.
Sounds good. Okay, so council, we have any discussion, any comments? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the two members, Tim Harry and Margaret Jones, to their respective boards? Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Councilman Thompson.
A second?
Second by Councilman Mata. All in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes, six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, citizen comments on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to address the council on any non-agenda item can do so by coming forward, stating their name and address for the record. Seeing once again that nobody's rushing up here, we'll move on to our favorite item on the agenda. It is item ten. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Swann. Do I have a second by Councilman Thompson? All in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes, six to zero. We are adjourned. Everybody hit roses for Taco Tuesday.
The mayor's buying.